Good evening. Welcome to the May 1st, 2025 New Hanover County Planning Board Meeting. This meeting is officially called to order. I am the Chair, Colin Tarrant. I'd just like to welcome everybody in the audience, those that are here today, as well as those who are watching at home. If I could remind everyone who's here in the audience, if they have a mobile device, if they could go ahead and silence that, or turn that off. If you plan on speaking, we've got a full agenda tonight. We've got seven matters. If you are here and you want to be heard, make sure that you've signed in back there, so that we have you on the list. We're gonna go down the list, and we're gonna call you out. You're gonna come up to the dice and say what you've got to say, but if you're not on the list, then we don't know that you plan on speaking. Make sure you've signed in. These meetings are closed caption for the public broadcast, so when you come up, make sure that you speak clearly and loudly into the microphone. Make sure you introduce yourself and state your name, I mean, state your address as well, for the record. At this time, if you're able, please stand for the saying of their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have some minutes to approve, some housekeeping for the board. I believe these are the December minutes, I think?
Which ones?
They're December 2024 minutes. I think we received those the other day, ahead of the meeting, so hopefully everybody's had a chance to review those. If there's a motion for approval or any changes, please let's go.
I'll make a motion to be approved, as submitted, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, minutes are approved. The items from tonight's meeting will go forward to the County Commissioners' meeting tentatively scheduled for Monday, June 2nd, 2025. The meeting will begin at approximately 4:00 PM, and will be held right here in the New Hanover County Historic Courthouse. The Planning Board representative for that meeting will be me, Colin Tarrant. In accordance with the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners' Resolution Adopting a Code of Ethics, as adopted on January 4th, 2016, it is the duty of all county boards and committees to respect and abide by the New Hanover County Code of Ethics in the performance of their duties. More specifically, all Planning Board members should, number one, obey all applicable laws; number two, uphold the integrity and independence of the board; number three, avoid impropriety; number four, faithfully perform the duties of the office; and number five, conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. It is furthered the duty of every board member to avoid conflicts of interest as defined in North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 160D, Section 109. Does any member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any of the matters coming before the board this evening, and if so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in that particular matter involved?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a conflict. I need to initiate the board. On the item number two tonight, public hearing request by Mr. Craig Johnson with Heron Cove Development LLC. As the applicant, Mr. Johnson does serve on a board of directors that I, for me, for myself, so I think it would be prudent for me, from an optics standpoint, to accuse myself on that project.
Alright, Mr. Moore. Members of the board, I think, in order to, for us to excuse Mr. Moore from item number two, it would be subject to a motion and approval by the board. Is that correct?
Correct.
Let her take a motion. Motion has been made by Mr. Hip to excuse Mr. Moore from item number two.
Second.
Second by Mr. Avery. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Moore, you will be officially excused from participating in item number two this evening. Are there any other members who have conflicts with any of the other items listed on the agenda tonight? Hearing none. The first six items on tonight's agenda are public hearings. The format for tonight's public hearing shall be as such. Each side will be given a total of 20 minutes. Fifteen minutes will be provided for initial presentations, one for the applicant, one for opposition, and then five minutes for both sides as a rebuttal period. As a reminder, this board is only an advisory board. The Board of Commissioners makes the final decision on any of the requests that are being considered here tonight. Public comment tonight can impact our recommendation and what may ultimately be presented to the Commissioners. This time, we'll go ahead and move forward with this evening's business. Number one on our regular item of business is a public hearing, rezoning request Z25-05, a request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions as applicant on behalf of Har STE Investments LLC as property owner to rezone approximately 19.32 acres located at 226 Edgewater Club Road and the 900 block of Waterstone Drive from the CZDR7 residential and R20 residential districts to a CZDR5 residential moderate high-density district for an 82-unit senior living, independent living retirement community consisting of a mix of detached and attached single-family dwellings. At this time, we'll be hearing from staff. Ms. Doss?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board. The property on Edgewater Club Road was originally zoned R20 in 1971. Outlined here, the southern portion of the site was rezoned, was rezoned three years ago to R7 for 44 townhomes. The site is surrounded by R20 on all sides. From the aerial photography, we can see the existing single-family home and surrounding institutional and residential development. Here's an aerial photo with images of the property from different angles. Here are examples of performance R20 single-family homes with the adjacent residential development. And here are examples of attached single-family homes. This is the current approved concept plan for the seven-acre portion on the south with 44 attached townhomes. Now you're looking at the proposed concept plan. Here's the portion of the development with 44 attached single-family homes for which it's already approved. On the north end, there's a portion of the development with 38 detached single-family homes, where currently 22 could be built by right for an overall addition of 16 single-family homes. Here's the amenity center, two stormwater ponds, emergency access, and the proposed sidewalk as referenced in Condition 1. And here's the 20-foot public access easement with a 5-foot sidewalk along Edgewater Club Road, referenced in Condition 4. There have been two rezonings nearby in the last few years. The proposed development is below the threshold that requires a traffic impact analysis. The current, the property currently has full access on the Edgewater Club Road and also interconnects with the neighborhood to the north along winding, to Winding Creek Circle. The site has won a few undeveloped tracks in the area and adjacent to a single-family residential neighborhood. The proposed attached homes will be two stories above a garage and restricted to the 40-foot maximum height as required by the county's UDO. The proposed detached homes will interconnect with an existing single-family neighborhood, and the development would have minimal impact on the school system. The comprehensive plan designates this property as being part of the general residential place type, which focuses on lower-density housing and associated civic and commercial services. Staff recommendation is based on policy guidance of the 2016 comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Since the proposed use is in line with the recommendations for the general residential place type, provides a variety of housing options for senior citizens, and serves as a transition between nearby residential uses, staff recommends approval of the request with four conditions related to sidewalks, the stormwater management system, and age-restricted housing. Should the rezoning be approved, the project will be subject to additional development review through the Technical Review Committee. This concludes my presentation. Tim Lo with County Engineering is here to answer any questions, and the applicant is here and has prepared a presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Doss. Any questions for Ms. Doss at this time? Alright, we'll move forward with the applicant's presentation. Ms. Wolf?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Cindy Wolf, and I'm here on behalf of the owners of the property. Appreciate Amy's synopsis of it. It's sort of interesting. When we first came in, our intention was just to rezone the 12 acres, which is the part that has no current approval, to R10, because it truly is just 3.3 units an acre at the 38 units of lots, 38 lots. However, we realized that there is a provision in the code that only allows age-restricted housing, and I think it's something that probably needs to be remedied, in an R5 district. So when this is all over and done with, the entire senior housing development that we're creating has an overall density of 4.2 units an acre, with both of those projects combined. So that's basically what we're doing here. We're rezoning the R20 portion of it for 38 single-family lots to the R5 with a conditional district, and the same thing with the R7. We're remedying the oversight that was made, so that doesn't change at all, it doesn't increase density, but it will all be conditional District R5. As we've talked about before in the past, and I think a good part of the reason this was approved the very first time around is our housing deficit locally. And certainly, providing for a senior housing, an age-restricted development, plays in well when we've got the situation with, of Porter's Neck, and sort of limited access points because of the creeks, because of the waterway. This is the project that was approved. As she pointed out, there was a amenity in it, and generally speaking, the buildings were still surrounding the pond area. But in expanding the site, it's much nicer to put the clubhouse and pool. It can be a larger facility for the extra people. It'll be an entry waypoint, and the architecture of it will serve as not only the sales office, probably, but then eventually for the homeowners and their amenities. So with that, I think there'll probably be more questions than anything else. I know that the opposition, one or two that came in over the internet, had to do with the schools, and as Amy pointed out, with an age-restricted, over 55 community, there really isn't any impact of the schools, but we had the standard responses based upon the number of units. The traffic is always an issue around a school during certain hours of day, and the fact that not as many people put their kids on buses as possible, it backs up because people are offloading and backloading during the afternoons. That's really not something we have a whole lot of ability to cure. So I'll try to answer any questions that might come up. Having to do with traffic, one of the things that we know are pretty, is pretty much a given, is that the existing turn lane into the south end of Waterstone, which is the school access, will be extended up our frontage, and we'll have a full right turn lane into our driveway. We intend for a fence along that 20-foot public access easement that we're dedicating along Edgewater Club Road, and we've committed to putting in that sidewalk. That I think will just be good for the benefit of the entire neighborhood. Because this is an R5 community, they'll be required to have sidewalks on both sides of any, of the streets. So again, we're aware of these conditions. We would accept them upon approval, and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Mr. Hip, um, let's see, do we have the time? If you have questions for Ms. Wolf now, we can-
I have one question.
If you have a quick question, we can go ahead and hear that.
I understood from Ms. Doss' presentation, they are two stories over a garage, so they're three-story units?
Yes, I took the, the elevations of those out of here, but generally speaking, yes.
Make sure it was three stories.
There are some parts of those townhomes that are the third, have a third story, yes.
Thank you. And is there a height designated at this point, an actual?
It was always 35, so that hasn't changed.
Alright, thank you.
Ms. Wolf, I do have Mr. Hardison signed up. He's with you, I'm assuming?
If we have any type of rebuttal or need for additional questions, he's available.
At this time, unless there's a pressing question, we can go ahead and start into the opposition and come back during board discussion for any questions. I think we've got a lot on the agenda. We'll try to keep this moving. So at this time, we'll close the applicant's portion and move into the opposition. Unless there's anyone here who wanted to speak in favor of the project, now is your time.
If he signs up.
Okay. I'm gonna go down the list. We do have a few folks signed up in opposition. I'm just gonna do the best I can reading this, but I think it's Virginia Williams?
She wanted to wait until later. Now, that's what she told me.
Okay, you can, you can do that. Ms. Joyce Ruffin?
Alright, just to make sure we're clear, like, this is the time for the opposition to present their position. So there's 15 minutes set aside for the opposition to talk, and there is a rebuttal period. You can defer and just wait to see if you want to say anything in rebuttal, but there's nothing to rebut if no one else speaks. So I do have one more. I have Luzetta Bradley. Okay. Is there anyone who wants to be heard in opposition? This is your 15-minute time period to make your positions to the board. Alright, Ms. Williams, please come up.
Now, Ms. Williams, if you don't mind just speaking into the microphone and introducing yourself, and giving us your address for the record, please.
My name is Virginia Williams. I reside at 301 Edgewater Club Road, and this project will be right in front of my door.
Understood.
And I didn't realize until talking with Cindy, this clubhouse is gonna be right in front of it, and this... What is this in front of? The clubhouse?
Looks like a pool.
The pool. Now, that's all in front of me. And you're coming in here from, from the right, traffic. That's a big tobacco, that traffic. That's what I'm worried about, that traffic. It's bad in the mornings. It's bad coming out the sp- excuse me.
It's alright.
From this, coming from the school. But this is gonna be even worse. Maybe in the end, it would work itself out. But that's my problem, is all traffic, and really, I don't like the pool in front of me, nor that other building. But I know it's going up, so that's my problem, that's what I have. That's all I'm gonna say about that, because I know good as well it's gonna be put there anyway, so I can live with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Either Ms. Ruffin or Ms. Bradley, would you like to say anything during this time period? Is there anyone else who didn't sign up who wants to be heard in opposition to this Ms. Wolf, you do have five minutes for rebuttal, behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. The only thing I would say certainly is, it's worth certainly aware that any type of an amenity, like a pool or clubhouse, it's important to have a little bit of, you know, buffering or certainly oversight and management of it. With a senior community, we would hope that they wouldn't be swinging from the chandeliers, but there is a fence all along that boundary, and, you know, it will be a screening fence for sure, and that should also attenuate the sound.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Ms. Williams, Ms. Ruffin, Ms. Bradley, you have an opportunity to rebut anything. This is a five-minute period. You've heard the applicant provide their rebuttal to your comments. You have the opportunity to speak if you'd like to during this five-minute period. If not, that's okay as well. At this time, we will move into the board discussion portion of this application. We've heard from the applicant, and we've heard from the opposition. Open it up to members of the plant, Planning Board. I mean, I'll, I'll start, just unless somebody's got something to say. I'm acutely aware of the area. I've lived up there for over a decade, and my kids have gone and do go to school there. Traffic is absolutely a nightmare, like most schools, in the morning and in the afternoon. And I feel for the folks who do live directly on Edgewater Club, because that, there is no way in or out during that time period at some, at some level. And I can't imagine that this is going to make it better, if it's already a bad situation. I know we're talking about turn lanes, and at least half this project's already been approved, but I think traffic is a considerable issue. It extends from that Waterstone Drive, which is the main area of ingress and egress for the school, all the way down Edgewater Club to the circle, and then back out the circle all the way up towards Porter's Neck Road at certain points. One of the things that we've discussed as a board was the condition for the sidewalk, and the importance of trying to figure out ways to get the, that traffic lessened as much as possible in and out of the school. There's no reason why the children that live in and around the area, which I think is a large portion of the kids who do attend that school, shouldn't be walking, but it's not safe for them to walk right now. And so, you know, I think that this is a start in order to try to allow them to be able to utilize a school that in some cases is feet, or less than half a mile from their residences to be able to get there. So I like where we're going with that idea. But I'm not gonna sit here and tell someone like Ms. Williams that she's not gonna have a considerable traffic problem that's gonna continue in front of her house. Yeah, it's, it's, it's real. So, I'd like to hear from other members.
Chair.
Ms. Ronhouse?
Thanks. I do think that this type of development compared to others is probably the least likely to have, the worst impact on the traffic, but I do come to worry with that. I, I think this is consistent with the surrounding use. I think the age restriction, it will have, you know, lower impact on the school, improve potentially the safety. The fence along Edgewater, I think, is, is very appropriate in, in the sidewalk as well, so I support for those reasons.
Ms. Hip?
Ms. Chair, I, I would echo those comments, and also, it is, it isn't a housing type that is needed in the area, 55, age-restricted, 55 or above, and I believe that that traffic impact will be much less than if it were straight single-family. But your comment, I want to reinforce the comment that the applicant has agreed to the condition to include an access easement along Edgewater Club, on their property, along Edgewater Club Drive. This is a, this is a, an excellent gesture to promote the sidewalk and the pedestrian activity that the community needs, and, and hopefully it will, it will continue, people along Edgewater will continue to encourage that. So based on that, I, I feel like the application is reasonable and, and consistent with the UDO.
Comprehensive plan. Excuse me, comprehensive plan. Yeah, I don't disagree. I mean, I, I do wanna make that clear. I do agree with Ms. Ronhouse's comments and Ms. Hip, that as far as uses go, this is about as, as, as less of an impact from a traffic standpoint as we can get, but I do wanna make sure that Ms. Williams understands that we do acknowledge the fact that that is a difficult traffic area, and, you know, half this project's already been approved, and that by right, they could put in a considerable amount of housing already, and I think, at this point, it is kind of one of the better options that we have on the table, but we do understand. I'll let you get, you can, if you can make it up here, absolutely. If possible, so that we can hear you, and that everybody at home can hear you as well. Here we go, we have a microphone, that, that'll work. Perfect, thank you.
House and the pool. Can you move that?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, that'd be up to the applicant. Mr. Moore?
This is a question for Ms. Doss. As far as that site plan there, obviously, it's gonna come in as its own, I would assume, commercial application, as far as review. Is there any type of buffer requirements or anything that the ordinance would actually require for that site?
For, are you, are you-
I'm sorry, for the amenity package?
For the amenity?
Yes.
Not other than, like, the standard?
I mean, I know you have the fence-
There's a fence, yeah, fenced buffer. Can I go back to this site plan? The, is it Ms. Williams, is that, is, are you, are you along, on the seam, or on the other side?
She's right there.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Or that one, actually. It's the one right above it.
There's gonna be the 20-foot easement and a fenced-
That more clearly clarifies my question. I was looking more at the road itself and the house that was just to the south of it, I guess. Wanted to make sure I fully understand. Thank you, Cindy, for pointing out exactly where her location of her house was. I don't have any other further questions.
Oh, okay, you thought it was something? Okay.
I don't have any other further questions.
Ms. Wolf, I have a question, please. I'm sorry.
She basically said, for an amenity, in all of the residential districts, amenities and recre- and private recreation is a permitted use, so there isn't any specific buffer from the single-family development or the amenity to the outside world. There are certainly buffer yards required for the attached part of it at the bottom. Obviously, the location of the amenity is central to both the townhomes and the single-family, so that's why it was important where we located it.
Having said that, would you be willing to build some sort of barrier there, sound baffle, that would at least-
Well, that's what I said. There will be, there will be a fence.
What will it look like? You say it will be there, what, what are you gonna build there?
It would be an eight-foot-high solid wood fence along that boundary. My guess is then it probably would reduce to six foot, but it could be eight foot along the amenity.
And your site plan, you're showing sidewalk being extended along the frontage of the property, is that correct?
That's correct. Along with the access easement being 20 feet, and I don't know whether that's for an eventual multi-use path or whatever, we would build a sidewalk.
Would you be willing to consider, I don't know if I'm gonna say this correctly, would you be willing to do other off-site improvements for the sidewalks that you will build to connect to the school driveway?
We're already doing that. Could I, Eric, could I have my plan?
You're already doing that, okay. I must have missed that.
Alright, we've got, this is the sidewalk we're discussing right now, and then there are side- And then there are sidewalks here. Um, you know, you can get across here and back down. The sidewalk here is connected to the school at that crosswalk.
Cindy, the, the markings are not showing.
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
They're showing.
I see you.
Yeah, they're up on our screen.
They're not shown on mine.
I'm sorry.
So we, I mean, I think we have a, a really good sidewalk network.
I agree.
It doesn't keep on going down to Waterstone. That wouldn't be our land, but certainly anyone walking along there can go through this property and over to the school.
Well, more than likely if you build a sidewalk all the way down to Waterstone to the school entrance, it'd be in DOT public right-of-way anyway, wouldn't it?
If it's in the right-of-way. The problem is Edgewater Club is only a sixty-foot right-of-way. And whenever you're talking sidewalks and there is no curb and gutter, there's a recovery pe- area that they require. If, I believe the speed limit on there is forty-five, is it thirty-five, forty-five? If it's forty-five, there's about a twenty-foot recovery zone going down there past those three lots. It'd be very difficult to put it in the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Chair.
And frankly, they didn't provide sidewalk from the school out to there. The sidewalk is basically at this point in.
That's right. Ms. Ronhouse.
Ms. Wolf, if you can help with this. Hi.
Oh, yes, thanks.
So I think the concern is if you're across the street and you're looking over, that you're worried about there, you've seen the pool and the amenity building?
Well, certainly noise, something like that.
Are you concerned with the visual or the sound? So I think the sound kind of is minimized by the age restriction. And I think that you're going to put a, a, a fence that's eight feet tall that you cannot see through.
It would be a solid wood.
Probably barely be able to see the top of, the top of the building. I mean, anywhere else you're going to be able to see three, you know, three-story high buildings. So you really kind of get the.
And the clubhouse is only one story.
Correct, yeah.
Ms. Wolf, on your, I'm sorry. On your application there, you just saw where I drew the blue line, darker blue line?
Yes.
That is the fence location, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And that's an eight-foot fence?
I suggested that it would be an eight-foot fence adjacent to the pool and the patio area around the pool. But then it would probably reduce to a six-foot fence at the backs of those yards.
Gotcha.
Just, uh, in my opinion, a big eight-foot fence along a road right-of-way just looks like you're, it's not as attractive. So I think six is reasonable. But in providing from, for some separation from the houses across and the pool area, eight-foot could be appropriate.
Okay. From, so back to staff, is that a zoning requirement? Or is that something y'all were just doing?
No, I think in, what's it called? Uh, code-wise, a swimming pool has to have a fence around it. But it does not have to be solid and screening. It would just be chain link or whatever. We would commit to a solid wood fence along there.
So my question then, go ahead, Ms. Dawson.
I, I was just going to add that when an amenity center is, it's submitted as a commercial site plan to us. So it's reviewed as for the standards for all the landscaping and buffering standards as required by the ordinance is reviewed at that time. It's not just, um, reviewed as part of the subdivision. It comes through as a commercial site plan.
Okay. My question then would be maybe, do we need to make this a further condition?
Can I just, one point of clarification, like that is the primary entrance, correct, to?
Yes, it will be.
I mean, does the developer have plans, I mean, to, to have, I'm assuming some sort of signage and/or landscaped entryway? I mean, it's not just going to be a stub, it's just going to be a road in. It's going to have, it's going to have more than just a.
Absolutely. And that's why generally having the amenity there at that front corner is a, is a good thing.
So I think part of what is potentially at issue here is the, the, the lack of being able to visualize exactly what's going to be there. As opposed to, um, the way it shows up on the site plan, we see the pool, we know there's a fence there. But it's going to be more than just a pool and a fence and a clubhouse as far as that entryway.
Yes, the aesthetics of it, absolutely.
Okay.
The fence is set back twenty feet and I guarantee that the fence will then come along our entrance road too. And then the signage on the corner, of course, would have to be set back such that the visibility, the, um, site distance between that road and Edgewater Club Road would be there. And it would be landscaped.
So if we're, if we're considering some sort of condition here, what, what kind of wording help us so that we're not putting you in a situation here that's going to hamstring you? I don't want, I know how you're going to want to kind of develop this out and I want to make sure that.
Actually, what we'd actually be wanting to do anyway is do a, a, a brick.
If you don't mind just saying your name for the record, so we got, sorry.
Yeah, we would be doing a brick wall instead of wood. So we're fine with that. And, and I would say if we're going brick, it'll help with the sound. And to do six-foot, because the eight would probably look overbearing. So I would say we do a, a six-foot brick along the pool and, uh, you know, we'll landscape it very nice.
Craig, I know who you are.
Uh, Craig Stevens.
Okay. And then your relationship to this.
Yeah, my name is Dean Hardison, Craig Stevens. I own, we're the owners and the developers of the property.
Thank you.
What we would propose to do is come down, to put the sidewalk in as we had proposed, come down from lots thirty-four to twenty-six with a six-foot decorative wood privacy fence. And then I hear, then I, I, I hear your concerns. Then, then we would pick up from that point with a brick fence and it would be vegetated, um, to take care.
All the plants in one of them.
And it would, of the noise and the, and we will also put heavy vegetation in there as well.
What size would that brick be? You said six-foot.
That brick fence would start at six feet and then as you get closer to the entrance, it's probably going to taper down to maybe five feet and then wrap around the entrance on.
Understood.
That'll be the entrance monument. It'll turn into the entrance monument.
Okay.
And then it would be heavily vegetated as well.
Ms. Williams, you understand what they're proposing?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Should we just let that fall out in T R C?
Yes, Mr. Hardison. What, what lot does the brick approximately, I thought I heard in lot twenty-six.
I'm saying probably somewhere it would start at thirty-four and it would come all the way down to somewhere in the general ballpark of the rear of twenty-eight.
Basically, right, you know, from there to there. And then the rest would wrap around with the brick.
Would be brick. Any more questions?
Uh, this is going to be a question for staff. Hearing all of this, Rebecca, is this something that can just play itself out in a T R C review? When the commercial site itself gets done for the amenity package? Or is this a little far outside of the amenity package T R C review?
Let me make sure I understand your question. Are you asking, does this need to be a condition?
Yes.
I would advise that if you want to make sure that this happens, then we have it as a, a condition just to make sure it's clear for all parties.
All right, you've answered my question.
All right, so is there any other discussion or any further questions for the applicant or any of the opposition? Okay, so at this point, we can discuss this matter further. We can work on a condition. We can, if someone's feeling confident and they want to make a, make a motion, we can hear that as well. Those are kind of our options right now. Ms. Hein, you're the man.
Thanks, Chair. At this time, I, I do want to make a motion. Do we need to ask her?
Um, we, we do. So before we, we move forward, and, and I appreciate that. We're a team. We work together here. Ms. Wolf, on behalf of the applicant, um, would you like us to, to move forward with a vote? Uh, would you like to ask for a continuance or withdraw your matter?
We'd like to move forward, please.
All right, applicants indicated they'd like to move forward. Mr. Hein.
Thank you, Chair. I move to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the proposed uses are in line with the place type recommendations. I also find recommending approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because of the proposed district, uh, would provide for efficient land use and a variety of housing types for an age-restricted community. With following proposed conditions. One, an additional sidewalk will be provided between the project and Porter's Neck Elementary School. Two, the stormwater management system will be designed, will be designed for a one-hundred-year storm event. Three, both the detached and attached single-family portions project will be age-restricted based on state and federal fair housing requirements for projects for individuals aged fifty-five and above. Four, a twenty-foot-wide public access easement with ADA accessible sidewalk will be installed along the project fronting Edgewater Club Road. The sidewalk must be installed or bonded as part of the construction of the subdivision. And the public access easement will be platted and dedicated with the recordation of the first plat associated with the development. Item five, a wood, six-foot wood privacy fence along Edgewater Club Road will be installed up to conceptual lot twenty-eight. At which point it will transition to a brick privacy wall with vegetation to the corner, uh, to the intersection.
I'll, I'll second that, but I'd like to get a clarification on the condition before I do that. We just had a conversation with Ms. Wolf that they weren't going to build a sidewalk all the way to the school at Wardiston, because that's not on their property. And the way that's written in this particular proposal, it's between the project and Porter's Neck Elementary School. That infers to me that we go from their property all the way up to the end where lot thirty-four is, all the way down to the school driveway.
Mr. Avery, um, there are actually two conditions related to sidewalks. So there is one condition, uh, number one, that's a sidewalk to Porter's Neck Elementary, or are you referring to something else?
I'm talking about the sidewalk itself. Condition number one, additional sidewalk will be provided between the project and Porter's Neck Road.
Right. The other condition has to do with the one at the south end that connects from the townhomes over to Waterstone and then to that crosswalk.
Is that the one you're talking about?
And, and condition number four is the Edgewater.
That's the one the condition addresses, but I think what you're saying is that the, the one along Edgewater Club, you want to see that extend all the way to the intersection.
I would like to see that, but I don't think I can, I don't think it's a condition that we'll agree to. But I would like to say that if you're going to build a sidewalk on, uh, along the main road out there, it ought to at least go all the way down their frontage.
Well, so those.
It shows that it does, but. Yeah, I know, it doesn't.
And I believe that is the condition, right?
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Mr. Avery, did you second that after?
Having been satisfied with explanation of that, um, I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. It does include the conditions. It has been seconded. It is time for a vote. All those in favor of the motion for Mr. Hein, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Application's approved. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Moving on to matter number two. Mr. Moore, you're excused for this one. This is a rezoning request, Z two-five dash oh-six, request by Craig Johnson with Heron Cove Development LLC applicant on behalf of Conwin and Gockwin, property owners, to rezone approximately ten-point-eight acres located at sixty-four-twenty-five and sixty-four-thirty-seven Gordon Road and nineteen-twenty-seven Gordon Acres Drive from R fifteen residential to a C Z D R five residential moderate high district for an eighty-one lot residential subdivision. Mr. Dickerson, hear from staff.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately ten-point-eight acres from R fifteen residential district to a conditional R five residential moderate high-density district for an eighty-one lot, single-family residential development. The site is currently zoned R fifteen and is largely surrounded by R fifteen zoning with some nearby R ten and the Ellington Farms Apartments to the east which were annexed into the city of Wilmington. The aerial photography shows the site is currently wooded with single-family housing in the vicinity. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles, including the stub road, which is currently off Daniel Boone Trail to the northwest. Here is an example of nearby R fifteen development on Daniel Boone Trail to the northwest. And here's an example of what you might see in a more dense, single-family home development. The applicant's proposed concept plan shows the eighty-one single-family lots. In order to make this easier for everyone to see, I've broken this up into two slides. This is the portion of the plan closer to Gordon Road, showing the area for stormwater and open space. This is the portion of the plan that's further back, showing more stormwater management in open space as well as the proposed recreation area to be accessed through a pedestrian access easement in the development and the proposed gated emergency access to Daniel Boone Trail. Access to the site is along Gordon Road as well as the proposed emergency access on Daniel Boone Trail. N C D O T is working on the Gordon Road widening project anticipated to start later this year. The proposed development would generate approximately sixty-one A M and eighty-two P M peak hour trips. This development would generate approximately ten more students than would be expected under current zoning conditions. This property is located on Gordon Road, roughly halfway between the intersections with Market Street and I forty. Gordon Road is in the process of being widened through an N C D O T project scheduled to start later this year, intended to increase capacity on the corridor. The surrounding area is largely residential with some higher-density projects in the vicinity, including two which have received special use permits to exceed the maximum density of their R fifteen zoning district. The single-family development would be in between two other single-family neighborhoods. While this project is more dense than both of those, the single-family character would remain uniform between the three. The twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan classifies this area as general residential. This project is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan's recommendations for properties that are located in the general residential place type. Staff's recommendation is based on the policy guidance of the twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Staff found the proposed conditional R five district generally consistent with the comprehensive plan because it fits into a largely residential area and wit- is within the recommended density of the general residential place type. As a result, staff recommends approval of the proposed development. The applicant has proposed some conditions encompassing emergency access, parking, and a six-foot fence at the rear of each lot in the development. Staff have received additional public comments which were provided to the board earlier today. Lastly, I'll add that if approved, this development would be subject to T R C and zoning compliance review processes in order to ensure full compliance with all ordinance requirements. This concludes staff's presentation. Mr. Timlow is here with county engineering if there are any questions that come up under stormwater. The applicant is here and is also prepared a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Is there any questions for staff before we move into applicant's presentation? All right. This time we'll hear from the applicant.
Sorry, Zach. So just to confirm, so they're adding a new road that would basically turn onto Gordon, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
All right, thanks.
Ms. Schaefer.
Thank you. Um, Zach's a lot taller than me. Um, good evening. My name's Amy Schaefer. I'm here on behalf of the applicant tonight. I have with me Craig Johnson, the applicant, as well as our civil and traffic engineers, if you have any questions for them as we go through this. Um, Mr. Dickerson did a very thorough job of explaining the location of the site, so. Mr. Dickerson did a very thorough job of explaining the location of the site, so I'm going to skip through those a little bit faster, current conditions. I would like to say again, the site is wooded, and Mr. Johnson or whoever develops would have to follow all mitigation requirements for tree planting and removal. To the north, we have Sun Coast. There are apartments and condos up there, and as you can see, they have smaller lots with larger homes, which is what we're proposing. We just have slightly smaller lots with slightly smaller homes. Also, to the east is Ellington Farms, which Mr. Dickerson mentioned, which was annexed by the city of Wilmington, but it is 10 units per acre. So again, we wanted to show this, and I'm sorry, it's a little bit hard to see the outlines on here. Hawthorne and Smith Creek is about eight units per acre. Ellington Farms is 10, and then Cape Harbor Apartments is 10.2 units per acre, and those are all within a mile, a mile and a half of this project. As Mr. Dickerson said, the site plan is kind of hard to see. It's in here if we need to come back and reference it for anything. We are asking for 81 single-family detached homes, which is a density of about 7.5 units per acre. We're proposing 29% open space. Only 20% is required. There is a fire access-only gated access to Daniel Boone Trail, and while a TIA was not required, we did have Davenport Engineering Review, and as I said, Mr. Bennett is here if you have any questions. We borrowed the site plan from staff because it was so well-done to point out some of the amenities. I would like to mention here quickly the proposed recreation area to the south. After meeting on-site with one of the adjacent property owners, Mr. Johnson has agreed to provide a utility easement. Gordon Acres Drive does not have water and sewer to a lot of their properties, and so Mr. Johnson would propose a utility easement through that recreation area for them to be able to connect at some point. It's really hard to see what this looks like from the site plan, so we wanted to show some illustrations and housing types so that you can envision what we have. The homes will all have a one-car garage in addition to their driveway, and we made sure that a vehicle will be able to park without crossing the sidewalk, which I know is a big deal, and sidewalks will be on both sides of the street here. The floor plans, we're proposing about 1,500, 1,600 square foot houses at a price point of about $325,000. Right now, if you look on Realtor.com, there are six houses for sale in that price point between 40 Military Cut Off, Kings Grant, and New Berry Road. Six. Just another illustration and another copy of our floor plan. We do feel that this project meets the comprehensive plan as it's eight units per acre, and we are under that at 7.5. It's an infill development. We're not accessing any neighborhood roads other than an emergency access, which would actually benefit Daniel Boone Trail as well because they have one way in and one way out of their neighborhood. I don't think I need to say that there is a housing deficit, especially in this price point, and this will fill that, or not fill, obviously, the numbers are extreme, but it will help to fill that gap. Again, we are in general residential and comply with those regulations. It remains consistent with single-family detached, and that was really important to Mr. Johnson. He'd had a project previously on the other end of the county where they were smaller lots, single-family detached, and the board actually recommended townhouses so that there was more space between the buildings, but there really just is a need for single-family detached for-sale houses in this area. As I mentioned, we'll also be providing water and sewer to our development, but that will also open it up to people who may not have water and sewer to have closer connections. Another important thing that I wanted to mention is the wetlands that go through the front of the site. The only impact to that would be the road that would cross it. This is a quick video I'd like to show because again, it's really hard to envision what this looks like just from a black-and-white site plan. I do want to note, this shows that there's going to be a gap in the median in front of our project. That is not correct. The illustrator got that wrong. This is a full median that will be on Gordon Road once it is four-lane. So you will, it's right-in, right-out only of our neighborhood once Gordon Road is complete. We didn't know if we'd have enough time to go to the full back of the property, but we wanted to give you some idea of what the neighborhood would look like. I have a couple minutes, so I'm going to try to address some of the public comments that we received. A lot of them had to do with stormwater, of course. Our engineer has already talked to the county, and the county stormwater is looking at this area holistically in addition to Gordon Road, the widening. There's just a lack of stormwater in this area. A lot of the neighborhoods are older and don't have stormwater, so the county is looking at that, and our civil engineer has already talked to the county stormwater about that and is working with them, looking at some of the downstream pipes and what would need to be done for that. Of course, our development would be required to meet all of the county stormwater requirements, the new county stormwater requirements, and we would do that through all-proper permitting. Another issue was traffic, and as I said, this will be a full median, and so there's not going to be anybody left out. It's just not going to happen. There is a U-turn that will be in front of, I forget what they call them, but the protected U-turns, that will be in front of this development. Right now, we think that the DOT is going to require the STEM to be too long for our residents to cut straight across and get to the U-turn, that they would have to go up to the light to U-turn, but we just don't know that yet. We're not far enough along in any kind of design, and of course, that would be up to DOT. I did mention we are over green space in addition. We are within a half-mile of Ogden Park. We are within a mile and a half of Smith Creek Park, and there's also a Parkwood Recreation that is close to this. So once Gordon Road is completed with their sidewalks and multi-use paths, that will be convenient to three parks in addition to our recreation and amenity space in this area. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and as I said, we have the development team and our engineers here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Shaffer. So everyone that I have signed up is with you, I'm assuming, as part of the applicant's team?
I think so. It's myself, Mr. Johnson, Charlie Crazier, and Don Bennett.
All right. And I have Ms. Jones signed up as well. Is there anybody else who'd like to be heard on behalf of the applicant? Okay. Ms. Jones, would you like to be heard?
Good evening. My name's Lydian Jones. I live at 803 Royal Bonnet Drive, Wilmington. I've been in the Wilmington, Wilmington area for over 30 years. I've been in this area for 20 years. My son went to Eaton, played soccer there. I'll need to go on and on, but based on what I've seen and what I've heard, I never thought I'd be living in a patio home 1,500 square feet. It's seaside, but our lifestyles changed. My son graduated and went away. I think this product is good for young people, young families that are trying to get into a price point. I know traffic is wherever anybody develops a topic, and I've been excited to see the right-away acquisition, the work that's going on. It's happening. It's going to have a multi-use path, bike path. Anyway, I am in favor of this project. Based on living here, I think that we need to create opportunities for other people that are living here. The growth's not going to stop. I'm happy about that. I like smart growth, like many of you do, but anyway, I just wanted to say I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I don't have anyone else signed up in support of the application. I'm going to move on to the opposition. I'm going to go down the list. You'll be provided 15 minutes cumulatively, so please keep that in mind. I do have five people signed up to speak, so make sure that you keep your comments succinct and concise so that the others who are signed up behind you also have an opportunity to speak.
Chair, can I ask a very quick question to the applicant?
During the board discussion.
Okay, fine.
Mr. Veris.
My name is Sarah Wright DeBries. I live at 1930 Gordon Acres Drive, which is directly east of the Heron Cove Development. We parallel Heron Cove. I'm also a North Carolina real estate broker, want to disclose that as well, but I am a longtime property owner in Gordon Acres, so I am one of the neighbors. And I represent our neighborhood through our Private Roadway Maintenance Association. I'm the president of the Board of the Roadway Association. My husband, Mike DeBries, has been the longest continuous property owner in Gordon Acres and has helped maintain with his own hands much of the infrastructure left behind when the original developer abandoned the neighborhood decades ago. We know firsthand what happens when development outpaces infrastructure and oversight. Tonight, I speak not as a real estate professional, but as a neighbor and advocate for responsible, connected growth. While our neighbor, Kim Turner, is going to share a detailed breakdown of the Heron Cove Project's immediate impacts, I'd like to raise several broader concerns related to long-term planning and infrastructure that must be considered before granting any zoning change. First, the zoning request, rezoning request to R5 for Heron Cove is simply too dense for the site and is inconsistent with the surrounding area. I've found no precedent for R5 zoning in the section of Gordon Road. The nearby R10 less dense and easy-daisy developments that I researched are less dense and were laid out with multiple access points and a grid-style planning to have multiple streets and access points. Heron Cove proposes 80-plus homes on a single dead-end road with only a gated emergency outlet. This is not only insufficient, it's dangerous. Gordon Acres has lived through this kind of failed design. We have had EMS delays, blocked access, and even road washouts due to inadequate drainage from neighboring developments. Second, this proposal places excessive strain on critical infrastructure. A single road is less accommodative to service and emergency vehicles, to likely overburden straight-line sewer systems and possible insufficient fire protection infrastructure along that road, and the risks are significant. These lots as small as 5,000 square feet, the street parking will be inevitable, further complicating access. The impact won't stop at Heron Cove's boundary. It will affect the safety and functionality of our entire neighborhood. If development is imminent, it's time for the planning board to consider greater interconnectivity among the surrounding streets. Gordon Acres Drive, Daniel Boone Trail, Heron Cove, and potentially an egress onto Farrington Farms would create a grid-based layout that could help resolve access and travel concerns for current and future residents. Additionally, it's worth noting that the property at 1934, Gordon Acres Drive, which is a 7.6-acre parcel, is currently for sale and has been offered to the developer. That parcel could be part of a better plan, more holistic solution, but as now, the opportunity has not been explored. Finally, if the Wynn property at 6425 and 6437 Gordon Road is not appropriate for this residential development due to cost burdens, I encourage the board to explore conservation alternatives, perhaps a wildlife sanctuary with a trail diversion. This could protect valuable tree canopy, support the county's environmental goals, and offer lasting public benefit. In closing, I respectfully ask the planning board to deny the rezoning change request in its current form. Gordon Acres has long carried the burden of poor planning. Let's not compound those mistakes with another disconnected, high-density development that lacks the safety, sustainability, and infrastructure that we need. We're not against growth, we're against short-sighted growth. Please require a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Kim Turner, and I'm here representing the residents of Gordon Acres. My husband, Bill, and I live at 1907, directly adjacent to the land proposed for rezoning to allow the Heron Cove development. We respectfully ask the board to deny the rezoning request from R15 to R5. This proposed change is out of character with our community. It would place additional strain on local infrastructure, and it does not align with the county's long-term goals for responsible growth. Over two-thirds of that property is densely wooded, providing a tree canopy that houses a wide variety of wildlife and varied species of trees and plants. Has this tract of land been studied with regard to the newly published New Hanover County Tree Canopy Report? This report states, and I quote, "2024, the Board of Commissioners adopted a new five-year strategic plan and identified sustainable land use and environmental stewardship as a key focus area." The trees in that canopy, end quote, the trees in that canopy are 30 to 40 years old. Has any study been done to identify the possible existence of live oaks, long-leaf pines, or other native trees within that area? Another quote from this report, "With ongoing development, especially in northern New Hanover County, home to some of the last large undeveloped areas, there is a growing need for additional information regarding the existing conditions of tree canopy within the county. At the meeting, the county commissioners established that the preservation of tree canopy was a top priority and necessary to help to inform plan objectives, policies, goals, and strategies," end quote. We support smart, sustainable development, growth that respects the existing neighborhoods and honors the integrity of the current zoning plan. As direct neighbors, our community has two primary concerns with this development. First, the traffic congestion and the loss of our natural buffers and privacy. My husband and I have concerns over the retention pond and its environmental impact in our backyard. It was mentioned in the first meeting that we attended with the developer that the pond could possibly be moved. Regardless of where it's moved to, my neighbors will have the same concerns as we do, who will be held responsible for the maintenance of the retention pond for the environmental safety of both communities once the developer has finished the project and moved on. The Heron Cove proposal includes a single entrance and exit road connecting to Gordon Road, a corridor already known for heavy traffic. With only one point of access, residents in both Heron Cove and Gordon Acres would be funnelled in would be funnelled into that single U-turn lane at Highland Pines Mobile Home Park, which lacks a traffic light due to the area's current low-density designation. Adding a high-density R five development here could introduce well over a hundred additional vehicles to this route each morning and evening, creating congestion and increasing the risk of accidents. We also value the peaceful character of our, character of our R fifteen neighborhood, which is supported by natural wooded buffers. The developer has told us the land will be clear-cut to accommodate approximately eight homes per acre. He plans to install six-foot privacy fences and plant one tree per lot, but this does not replace the environmental and aesthetic value of the mature tree canopy that currently separates our properties. Another quote from the twenty-twenty-four Tree Canopy Report, "Planting trees to mitigate trees removed is not a one-to-one conversion. Some trees are more high-value than others. They support more ecosystem services, have a larger canopy, or increase onsite biodiversity," end quote. Wouldn't the thirty to forty-year-old trees on that property be valuable enough to warrant an investigative look before the land is rezoned to R five and the tree canopy destroyed? Given that high density, all the trees would have to be cut to accommodate eight dwellings per acre. We believe that preserving existing vegetation would be, would better protect neighborhood character and contribute to responsible land stewardship. In closing, we ask a fundamental question. Why is this rezoning needed? Does it serve the broader interests of New Hanover County? Or does it simply benefit absentee landowners and private developers? Just because a developer needs to make a profit, is it the right thing to do to destroy two adjacent neighborhoods when the property he proposes to build on is not adequate to begin with for the number of houses he wishes to build? In truth, the developer has been offered more acreages, as was stated earlier, but has declined even entertaining that offer because of his concern for his profit margin. This developer is not concerned with preserving the land or the character of our neighborhoods, only his profit, profitability. If rezoned, is this in keeping with the county's strategic plan focus on sustainable land use and environmental stewardship? If not, we must ask, why approve this request at all? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Tim Strickland?
It's about four and a half minutes left. My name is Tim Strickland. I live at nineteen oh eight Daniel Boone Trail with my wife and my daughter, who are here tonight, too. And my mother-in-law and her husband live next door at nineteen oh two, and she's probably got something to say, too. I don't have anything fancy written down, any fancy slides, and I do live on a road that will be affected, just like the ladies from Gordon Acres. If you can just think and imagine what you're gonna see, I don't have a problem with growth and building and developing. You know, we all got neighbors, we all got things going on. It's the excess amount of growth. What is it, R fifteen? Do some of you remember in twenty eighteen or so, one of my neighbors sold his horse stable at the end of our street on Daniel Boone Trail? You know who bought it? Habitat for Humanity bought it. How many homes did Habitat for Humanity put on that piece of property? Twenty-seven homes. Twenty-seven homes. We're talking about taking that amount of space and putting eighty-one two-story, three-hundred-plus-thousand-dollar homes? You could put a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home behind my home if you want to, but you're putting three behind my home. You're putting three behind my next-door neighbor, my next-door neighbor, my next-door neighbor. Twenty feet from my property lot, not much further from me to you guys, a two-story home, three of them, in each of us's backyard on Daniel Boone Trail. That's a lot. That's a whole lot. I won't say who, but a builder out of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, bought the property across the street from me. You know how many houses he's gonna build? Five. Only three of them face me and my next neighbor. So within the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot span in front of me, three two-story homes. You're talking about six behind me in that same amount of space, and actually more than that, because if you go in the depth of it, this gentleman wants to put a road and six more houses. So in that same amount of space that's in front of me, behind me, there'll be six, twelve homes and a road and a sidewalk. That's a lot of, that's a lot of growth. And trying to fill a gap of, we need more housing for this and that and the other, you'll probably always have that. Why do we constantly get it out here anyway? Every time something gets built, it's townhomes and storage units, you know? Come on. It is. But I don't have a problem with growth. I have a problem with excess. I think that's a lot. That's extreme. That is a lot, a lot. And from the heart, that is a lot of homes to put on that small piece of property. So I'm getting out here. My mother-in-law's got a word. Thank you very much.
Helen Hollingsworth?
I will try to be quick and give you some facts that I have not heard. I disagree with Ms. Turner about a hundred cars, because on the Habitat Homes, there was twenty-seven. I went out one Sunday morning at six o'clock. There's over a hundred cars. I guarantee there's probably over fifty children, schoolchildren, from the Habitat Houses that all come up to my house for the bus stop in the morning and invade my property like you can't believe. Okay? Also, I've lived there for forty-five years. I have seen Gordon change like you have can't believe. I live on the first creek. It floods so bad, I have had water two foot up in a shed that sits near the creek. During Florence, I had water in a shed in the front yard, which the DOT has kindly taken from me, so I don't have to worry about it flooding anymore. The pipe on Daisy Lee, which controls that ditch, is a sixteen-inch pipe. There's our flooding issue. We're on the books to change it, but it's not getting changed. The three roads there are Daisy Lee, Daniel Boone, and Gordon Acres. Daisy Lee has twenty homes on the whole road. We have forty-four thanks to Habitat. Gordon Acres only has twenty-seven. That's ninety-one houses. You're gonna build almost as many on one road. It's unbelievable. That property floods so bad during Florence, the owners left it and never came back. It's not flooding now because we're in a drought. Every time I have called the county about the flooding issues, I've been told as long as Gordon Road doesn't flood, they're doing nothing for us. I've been there forty-five years. I've fought this. I've fought this battle. We pray you will not allow this. We're concerned, as Mr. Strickland was saying, the houses they're building in front of us, they took out two homes and they're building five. They have hauled at least a hundred loads of dirt in there. If they do that behind us, we'll be underwater when we have a hurricane again. I don't know if any of y'all are familiar with Gordon Road. Four years they're gonna work on that road. It's a nightmare already. A nightmare. And if you don't live there, you don't get it. So we hope you will not invade us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollingsworth. Um, I do have one more signed up. I'm Ms. Carolyn Park. I'm gonna hold on you, if that's okay, until we come back on the rebuttal. I do wanna give the applicant their five-minute rebuttal period.
Thank you. I don't think I'll take up my full five minutes for rebuttal. Briefly, access, again, we are constructing a road. We have to construct it to DOT subdivision standards, so it'll have full drainage. Our access, we do have an emergency access in the back, but we are meeting all fire code requirements for access, and we will have to meet all fire code access requirements for access. Street parking, as Mr. Bennett reminded me, is traffic calming from a traffic engineer's perspective. But, you know, I, I live in an R fifteen neighborhood that has no on-street parking, and my daughter was fifteen minutes late to class the other day because two people were parked in the middle of the road, and she's sixteen and didn't know how to get around them. So, you know, we hope for not, but that's, you know, that, that is the living in a neighborhood. As for any infrastructure, trees, environmental, before any development takes place, the developer has to do a complete tree survey and submit that. As I said, any mitigation would be required as well. The county has certain trees that can't be removed, and if they're on that, then, you know, the, the development has to take that into consideration as they go through the technical review process. The environmental studies have all come back clear that we have, and those will all be provided to the county as part of the technical review process as well. And in addition, as we stated about flooding, I, I understand their concerns, and it is a problem there. The county is looking into it, and our development will have to comply with all stormwater requirements. I think I hit most of the points, but if there's anything else, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else on behalf of the applicant or in opposition? I mean, in, in support of the applicant? All right, moving into the opposition's rebuttal period, Ms. Park?
Hello, thank you for taking the time to listen to me as well. Some of the things that I actually have to say have already been covered, so I will quickly not go over that again. Some of the things that I would like to say are actually kind of rebuttal.
Can you move the mic over?
Can you hear me better now? I don't like yelling at people.
Audience couldn't hear you.
Okay, I don't like yelling at people, so I feel like I am. Some of the things that I actually want to say is in rebuttal to some of the arguments that the builder is saying about the project. One thing being is that I live off of Gordon Road in a single-home community that has two-car garages with also the ability to have two cars in the driveway. And we have off-street parking issues all the time. It is not as high-density, and we have had issues where people's cars have gotten dinged because people literally can't get by. I understand that living in a community, living in a housing community, is going to have to deal with off-street parking, but when you have a single road for all of these homes with a single-car garage, a single car in the driveway, and you're saying that this is also going to increase not just how many houses are there, but these are all family homes, meaning you're gonna have at least two cars. You have kids with those families. How many cars are gonna be that when those kids start driving? None of this is being taken into account. Another thing that's not being taken into account is that, yes, things are still being assessed. They will comply with permits and any other judgments that are made by this government. However, they have also stated online that costing of these houses could increase due to availability, demand, construction costs. How is that going to be built? And if it comes back that there are major issues that they're gonna have to handle for floodwaters or for the tree removal, who's gonna end up paying for that? These houses will no longer be in the price point that they are so adamantly saying is needed in this community, which, yes, we do need cheaper housing. However, this is not the way to do it. As for easing with the traffic because we're beginning the widening of Gordon Road, as the previous woman said, how long is that going to take? How long did the bypass take to get completed when it was supposed to have been done years ago, and it just recently got done? What is going to happen when Gordon Road is a total disaster because of this widening construction? And you now have an additional eighty-three homes, all going to the elementary school, which if anybody has tried to get past that elementary school in the morning or when school is being let out, will tell you, even with widening the road, it is not gonna help that traffic that much to be able to withstand all this additional traffic. I also have lived here during Florence, and in my neighborhood, one of the culverts collapsed, and half of the houses on that side of the street were flooded, almost considered unredeemable because of the floodwaters being so bad. And that's because one culvert failed. What happens if something happens on Gordon Road? As we already have said, there is flooding issues in neighborhoods that are already pre-existing. Now you're asking to have more property, less tree coverage. There are studies that show that higher-density population of houses, buildings of any kind do affect how much flooding will happen during hurricanes or any other type of unreasonable storms, which seem to be happening more and more often. Now, you could say that, well, they are also gonna have more than twenty percent of green space. However, recent studies, as of last year, have shown that impervious services are not the only things that will dictate whether or not somewhere is going to flood worse on high-density housing. This is one of those things. With a single street, all the problems with parking, all the problems with Gordon Road being widening, and we have no idea if that's gonna be on schedule, on time, and how long it's gonna take, how is this going to affect the other communities and anyone else trying to get down Gordon Road? And anyone who's trying to get to the schools in that area? I just think that increasing the density of that particular plot would be a very bad idea, especially since we cannot predict what they're gonna come back and say that if they have to improve other things within the community, that the pricing point is now gonna be over four-fifty or whatever happened. Or they're gonna make it even smaller homes. This is just not sustainable, in my opinion, because there's too many things that could go wrong as it currently sits. Thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Park. There's about thirty seconds left. If there's anyone else from the opposition that wants to take that last thirty seconds, they can do it, but it better be, it, it better be quick. That's all I'm saying, so.
Again, my name is Kim Turner. Yes, there is a need for this price-point development for young professionals, but there's been no explanation of why this development must be so dense. All we can presume is that it is because of the developer's profitability. If he is sincerely trying to offer affordable housing for the growth of our community, why not look at the additional acreage offered to create a more reasonable solution to affordable housing?
Thank you. All right, at this time, we will move into board discussion. If any members of the board have questions for either the applicant or members of the opposition, now is the time for them to ask. Any comments from members of the board? Ms. Roanhouse?
Just two quick questions. I think this is for you, Zach, if you know the answer. How many houses could be built for the existing R fifteen zoning?
Under the R fifteen zoning, they could get twenty-seven in performance residential.
Thank you. And do we know the distance to the, to the nearest U-turn on Gordon Road from that?
So you mean in the widening project or as it stands now?
I don't know.
I, I don't know the answer to now. We do have a diagram that's...
How far is that? I'm just looking for the distance away to, when it's, when it's updated.
Don Bennett, Davenport Engineering Transportation Consultant from the project. I do not have the full plans for Gordon Road with me to give you a distance of how far it is. The best I could do is, is measure a Google map to give you an idea of how far it is. But the whole concept of the reduced conflict intersection corridor, which is what DOT is implementing on Gordon Road, is to allow periodic U-turns that allow you to bleed off some of the traffic that would otherwise have to go all the way to White Road. While there is a U-turn facility provided in front of here, because of the proximity, when the site goes through the driveway permitting review process, DOT will ultimately tell the client where his driveway will be, what improvements he has to make for it, and if it, they are necessary, any modifications to the Gordon Road project design.
Thanks.
Zach?
Mr. Roanhouse, I, I looked. It's about two thousand, about a third of a mile.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tron?
I'm not sure if this is for staff or the applicant, but what, what are the average lot dimensions and setbacks? The proposed home sites in this community?
I, I can't answer home size, but on the site plan, the lot sizes were about three thousand square feet. Is that correct?
But dimen- dimensions, road frontage fifty feet wide, forty, how wide, how deep?
I can pull that up. So forty-three by forty-three? Forty-three by sixty-three.
Forty-three by sixty-three? And what are the side and rear setbacks?
So, in a performance residential development, there are no side setbacks. The houses would have to be at least ten feet away from each other, and there is a twenty-foot perimeter setback around where the development abuts other neighborhoods.
Thank you.
I have a question for the applicant. Tell me about connectivity. Why are we not connecting anywhere?
Sure. So, at the community meeting, and I think you might even have our community meeting exhibits in your packet, we had actually proposed two site plans that didn't look like this. So, one of our proposed site plans had full access down to Gordon Acres Drive and the other one and Daniel Boone Trail. We heard at the meeting that they didn't want eighty-one homes coming through their neighborhoods, which are private streets. In addition, Gordon Acres Drive is not improved, and so that would require improvement, and so when we submitted, we did submit with the gated access. I have not looked into title for all of those other roads, once we decided that we weren't gonna connect after the community meeting to see what would be required. You know, sometimes all homeowners are required to approve, so we're not, we don't have those details, but that's why there's not that interconnectivity, sir.
All right. Zach, if I can follow up with Zach on this one, I think. I know, obviously, they're gonna have to go through their review on this. I mean, staff doesn't have any concerns regarding the lack of connectivity here?
So, the surrounding roads are all private roads. Obviously, we encourage interconnectivity, but this would be between private, essentially private property owners. Daniel Boone Trail is private as well as Gordon Acres Drive, and they would have, they do have the gated emergency access there, but that'd be something that the two owners of those private roads would have to work out between each other.
Yeah, I wanna, if you can come up, I wanna hear what the deal is with Gordon Acres Drive.
Sarah DeReeves again. So, as I had said previously, the developer of Gordon Acres Drive abandoned the property and left the right-of-way as a gravel road. There were other issues with the neighborhood infrastructure, that we never received water sewer, but it's been a continuing issue for us to have to maintain as a private, basically, it's a glorified driveway, private road. We have finally put together a private road agreement for maintenance. We went to the community meeting, and we were engaged in talking with the developer about the use of Gordon Acres Drive. We were not opposed to the use. What we were opposed to is that there was the connection to Gordon Acres Drive, and they would use our gravel, private gravel road, which we pay extensively to maintain without bearing some of that cost. And so, we talked about them providing pavement or some other offset to help us with our infrastructure issues. We have gone for years to the county to ask for help with paving our road, and it's always been left up to the homeowner's burden. And there are a lot of the homeowners now who are elderly, fixed income, and it's just not at their disposal to be able to chunk out, I think we thought that there was gonna be an assessment to each homeowner for about six thousand dollars, just to get a basic two-inch layer of pavement, and just six thousand dollars, a lot of homeowners did not have that at their disposal to chunk out. We didn't have any loan programs. We asked the county if we could do an abandoned road program, but that wasn't available because we're not a pass-through road, we're a dead-end road. And so, it had to be an abandoned road that led somewhere to be able to, you know...
Did the applicant offer to put forward any type of assistance for...
No. No, they changed their option of their development based on, I believe, the cost of having to deal with this.
Okay, that satisfies me. Thank you very much. Ms. Ryan.
I may have missed it, but I think I heard some conflicting information. One, I heard that there's no precedent for this density, but I think I saw in the presentation neighboring parcels of medium density. Do we have that visual with neighboring densities?
It might have been during the applicant's presentation.
Got it. Is that the one you mean that shows the Ellington Farms at ten units per acre, the Cape Harbor Apartments at ten point two?
To follow up, to follow up on Mr. Heinz's question there, those three locations you've shown, they all have interconnectivity. They're not an individual road that just comes off of Gordon Road, are they?
They are all not interconnected. They are all...
Single, individual?
Single, individual. Maybe Cape Harbor Apartments might have another access, but Ellington Farms and Hawthorne do not.
So, Cape Harbor goes out to market, and it goes to Gordon?
Yeah. And Mr. Tarrant, if I may, just briefly, your question as well, I spoke with the county. Our understanding is if we were to, if we were to connect to Daniel Boone Trail, that we would have to not only contribute our share, but bring it completely up to all standards with stormwater, with pavement, with curb and gutter, the whole nine yards, in addition to, respectfully, one person isn't everybody on the road. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Ms. Chair.
From Ms. Schaefer, Ms. Schaefer? The point brought up regarding tree coverage?
Yes, sir.
It seems apparent that this development could not take place without fully removing all of the trees. Is there a reason why the developer didn't take the time to do a tree survey prior to presenting this application?
We did a tree survey. It should be in your packet.
Is it in the packet?
Yes, sir. In the application and the concept plan, there, the existing condition sheet shows a tree survey on the site.
I apologize, I did not see it.
That's all right.
Are there any protected trees that you identified that cannot be removed?
So, there are some trees that would require mitigation on the site. At this point, I don't believe there were any specimen trees on the site which would require a variance to remove.
I'm gonna make some comments. So, first of all, I think the R-five is good. I like the R-five. I like the fact that, I think it's a type of housing option that we need more of. I think that the area along Gordon Road is a good location for the R-five. I just have some issues with this road. I just, trying, it feels, let me tell you how it feels. It feels to me like we're trying to force as many units as possible on the smallest area, that just doesn't seem to fit. And that's just, that's just me being very frank. And so, I feel like that there's a project here. I feel like there's a project here, a good project that could be built out, but it's too dense, it doesn't connect, it's just, it just doesn't, I don't know. I'm interested to hear what other members of the board have to say, because this one just, it's on the right track, but it feels like it's a bit of an overreach, and it's not quite there yet.
I would echo that. On first blush, the idea of providing a housing type in that market is not unreasonable. But there is, there is, the point about the lot sizes is very, very valid. The twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot lots, it's less, that's less than a tenth of the lots on Gordon Acres, a tenth. Daniel Boone Trail is less than a fifth of the size of the lots on Daniel Boone Trail. It's, it seems like a massive overreach of development on a parcel that begs for development, but it seems to be too much. A project that had a mix of lot sizes or a mix of building types would be more palatable to me, but as presented, to cut a road as straight as an arrow down that parcel and then carve up three little lots adjacent to the ones at Gordon Acres, it's just, it seems like too much for that area. I'm surprised that...well, it seems too much.
Our leadership is, I don't know, going back how far, but we have a huge housing deficit, and we have a huge workforce housing deficit. And I think we end up talking out of both sides of our mouths, and you can't have workforce housing on R-15 property. I don't, anecdotally, I think a typical half-acre lot in New Hanover County is selling for, what, two hundred, two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars just for the land? Our land pricing has absolutely gone nuts, and it's not gone nuts in the last fifteen or twenty years, it's gone nuts in the last four or five years. And the desire for people to live where they work, you know, the teachers, law enforcement, or public servants, should they be allowed to live in New Hanover County where they work, or do they need to come in from Pender County, Brunswick County? It's a big dilemma, and I don't disagree that it makes you swallow pretty hard when you look at the size of these lots. But if, you've got an opportunity for eighty-one families to have the American dream and have a home, or, or nothing, or somewhere in between, I don't know. I mean, I'm very, very torn on this project because it fills a huge need, and I don't see a greedy developer out there trying to figure out to make just as much money as they can. I see somebody, an entrepreneur, that looks at this huge need and is trying to fulfill that need. But again, I'm very torn in when we talk about the connectivity. This whole board, we talk about it meeting after meeting, we want connectivity, it makes for better neighborhoods, but you can't change the past, you can't change a bankrupt developer in the neighboring neighborhood and the private roads issue, and then having to bring those up to code. I mean, those economics don't work. Your two neighboring subdivisions, they both have shotgun roads, they're not connected to anything. The difference is density, and I hear, and I appreciate all the neighbors coming out and voicing their concerns, so I think that's a huge part of what makes our country work and work well. But it's a real dilemma for me. I mean, I wanna vote yes for this, but the density is just a little bit strong. Those are my thoughts.
Chair. Okay.
Ms. Roanhouse.
I'll just add my two cents, and I'm also struggling with this one. It seemed attractive at first glance. I do feel strongly that there is a need for this, these types of houses in this area. I mean, there's wetlands there that are being kept, and they're adding stormwater management. What is going on? I also, the tree canopy thing is tripping me up a little bit. I think the points made about that are very valid, and it is something that we're trying to prioritize as a county. So, I appreciate that being brought up, and it certainly will increase traffic, you know, and have a lot of U-turns going to the school. I guess, I think I'm just talking a lot right now, but I do, the density issue is a concern. I also think the connectivity, it's not really fair to have to improve other roads to do that. I think that's unfortunate. Yeah, I'm a little on the fence as well.
Well, everybody's kinda said their piece, and so I don't...
I have no comments.
Including, including Mr. Avery, he's, but, you know, we do need to, we do need to move it forward, and I think, you know, we can discuss it further, it's the pleasure of the board as to how we move it forward, if we wanna hash out some more, we can do that, if we're ready for any type of motion, we can do that as well. I do wanna just underline something, and that is that I, the R-five and the housing type that's been proposed, I believe everyone who's spoken has spoken in support of that, and they've spoken in support of the location, that type of housing, that type of zoning. I think where, there has been some comments as far as hesitancy in supporting the project. It's this particular parcel of land and the way in which it is, the way in which the site plan intends to include the eighty-one lots on that narrow piece of property with a dead end is giving us pause. Because I think that if there was another configuration for this, if there was another parcel, if there was more connectivity, this would be a no-brainer in this particular area, at least for this board, because we do consider this important, and we do consider this important in this particular area, and we do believe that it's something that we need. But I do wanna caution, however the board decides to move forward, that just because we're in a housing deficit, and just because we do need this type of product, does not give us an excuse to approve everything, okay? It doesn't mean that we have to approve something if we know or if we feel like it's not appropriate, and it's up to this board, and it's up to the commissioners to vote and determine what they believe is appropriate. So, again, what's your pleasure?
I'm willing to make a motion.
Before you do that, we, if we're, if we're ready for that, I will ask Ms. Schaefer how she would like us to move forward. Would she like to proceed to a vote, request a continuance, or withdraw your application? You can do that, Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. Am I taking Paige out of your playbook?
Turn your mic on, now, maybe.
Actually, Ms. Schaefer, given all the comments, there is a sentiment... Actually, Ms. Schaefer, given all the comments, there is a sentiment to, is what the Chair said, a sentiment to, to approve this, but the density is just, you know, the neighbors aren't happy about it and it seems like a lot. Has your client considered a different, a somewhat less dense approach? Because I'm not so sure.
But if you give us some time. No, well, obviously he has, right? When you purchase a property and the land, and the land Mr. Vizes representing that she's willing to broker to us. Those are all things that, that you take into account when you come up with a project and, and your density. But at this point, going lower than eighty-one has not been something that we've considered. But listening to the board, your comments and concerns, if you would give us some time and perhaps a continuance to, to take a look at that. I don't know that there's going to be anything that, that we can do. But based on the board's feedback, Mr. Johnson is willing to look at the site plan and see if he, he can come up with something else to maybe bring you back at your next meeting.
Ms. Schaefer, we, we appreciate that. And just so I have an understanding and a clear understanding as to what this board needs to decide, are you requesting that we consider a request for continuance until the June planning board meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the applicant has requested a continuance to the June planning board meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to continue has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion to continue is granted. Ms. Schaefer, we'll see you and the applicant in June. Thank you.
Okay. I'll come back. I, I appreciate that. That would be interesting.
They are. I'm a lame duck.
Yes, do you want more?
All right, continuing forward, we have item number three on the regular items of business. This is a public hearing rezoning request. Z-two-five dash oh-seven, request by James Fentress with Stroud Engineering as applicant on behalf of Dallas Harris, property owner, to rezone approximately 1.15 acres located at seventy-four ninety-five Market Street from a CZD Community Business District to a CZDCB District for two commercial buildings for the use of general retail and limited uses.
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the board. The application is a request to rezone approximately 1.15 acres from a conditional CB Community Business District to a new conditional CB Community Business District for the use of retail sales and other limited uses. The property is at the intersection of Market Street and Torchwood Boulevard and was previously rezoned from R-15 Residential to a conditional CB Community Business District in June of 2022 for the use of a bank and other uses. As a note, this property is also in the Special Highway Overlay District. From the aerial photography, we can see the undeveloped lot, residences to the west, and commercial development to the east and south. Here's an aerial image of the undeveloped site. This is the view of the live oak tree to remain on the property, the fence, and the neighboring residential properties. This is the, this is the view of the current conditions of Market Street next to the site. This is also where the multi-use path is expected to be installed as part of DOT improvements. Here's an example of representative development for a retail and office building. This is the previously approved site plan under the 2022 rezoning of the property. This shows the currently proposed site plan. One of the major changes is the removal of the second access to Torchwood Boulevard. There will now be just one access to Market Street. The new plan also proposes a phase development consisting of two commercial buildings with associated parking. There will be fence buffers along the neighboring residential properties. This shows the location of the live oak tree that will remain on the property. There's stormwater next to Market Street. And this shows where the multi-use path along Market Street will be installed as part of those NC DOT improvements. There is one purpose access to Market Street, which will be a right-in, right-out only access with a signalized U-turn at the intersection. There have been a few commercial projects nearby within the last few years. Along Market Street, there is one state transportation improvement project for the widening of Market Street. The project will also include, as I said, a multi-use path along the northwest frontage of Market. The project is below the threshold that requires a traffic impact analysis. In addition, the approximate peak hour trips is expected to decrease. The property is located at the intersection of Market Street and Torchwood. Both streets are owned by NC DOT. The site is currently commercially zoned for the use of a bank and the new proposal, proposals expected to decrease overall peak hour trips. A fenced buffer will be provided between the subject site and neighboring residential properties. And there are additional conditions proposed to help ease the impact on neighbors. If approved, the rezoning would remove the access to Torchwood Boulevard and leave just one access to Market Street. The 2016 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as community mixed use, which focuses on small-scale mixed-use development patterns that serve all modes of travel. Staff's recommendation is based on the policy guidance of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Since the proposed use is in line with the recommendations for the community mixed-use place type as a relatively low-traffic generator and is located near other commercial uses, staff recommends approval of the request. The existing conditions that currently apply to the property will remain and they are related to retail hours of operation, exterior lighting, landscaping, and screening of the dumpster. With applicant's approval, four new conditions are being proposed, which are related to expanding the use of allowed uses, the aesthetic exterior of the northern building, additional plantings in the Special Highway Overlay District, and the retention of the live oak tree. Should the rezoning be approved, the project will be subject to additional development review through the Technical Review Committee. This concludes my presentation. County engineering is here to answer any questions as well as the applicant.
Thank you very much for the presentation from staff. At this time, we'll move right into the applicant's presentation.
Good evening. I'm Jimmy Fentress with Stroud Engineering. Brought this project before you in 2022 to be a bank. And there was a cloud on the title at that time. In the course of resolving the cloud on the title, we lost the interest of the bank. Brick-and-mortar banking is not as popular as it used to be, I reckon. We now have a suitor for a retail use on the first phase. And so we would like to change the use in the conditional zoning to the, that proposed, which is home goods retail. It's a little bit broader than we had before in hopes that we won't be back here before you again. And also still yet retaining the office use that we had with the prior approval. I'm here primarily to answer any questions. We've had a couple of community meetings. There was two attendees to the first one. There's no opposition here tonight that I'm aware of. There wasn't any on the sign-up sheet. At the second community meeting that we had, there was no attendees. We fleshed out most of the development concerns in the first go-around in 2022. We feel like confident of that. And then also the dealings on resolving the, the title. So if there's any questions that I can answer, I'm eager to do it.
I think at this time, Mr. Fentress, we'll, we'll, is there any questions? I don't have anyone else signed up in support of the project other than, I believe, the applicant and applicant's team. Are you aware of anyone else that would be speaking? Is there anyone else here that wants to speak in support of the project? All right, I don't have anyone signed up in opposition. Is there anyone here who'd like to be heard in opposition to this project? Well, you can come up and, well, let's come up and, and tell us who you are and ask your question.
My name is Elizabeth Sykes. I live literally the fourth house on Lost Tree Road. And I'm just curious. I make that left-hand turn probably five to six times a day out of our neighborhood onto Market Street, which is kind of a fend-for-yourself right now and hope for the best. Do you see any complications having that one entrance and exit out of that retail space that close to such a busy intersection?
It will be right-in, right-out.
Okay. It is just mass chaos at that, especially the angle, since it's not a ninety-degree angle in all directions. That intersection is already dangerous and just, was just concerned if that thought had been put into place. Thank you.
No, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard as pertains to this application? All right, this time I'm going to open the floor up to board discussion. Any questions that you have from Mr. Fentress or the applicant team? Now's the time to ask them. Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
I have a question from Ms. May. One of the conditional items was veterinary clinic. There's, that would not include any outdoor cages or anything of that nature, correct?
So that was a staff-proposed condition, so we can edit that to include that.
To, to limit no outdoor occasion. I think that would be a good condition to add. And then for Mr. Fentress and maybe for, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Last name? Sykes. So I, I wasn't on the board in '22 when the first project came out. And I was a little surprised that the access to Torchwood was removed. Can you give some insight as to why that was removed from the overall project?
There was concerns from the people in the community about that access. We expressed those concerns to the DOT. The DOT was in support of removing the driveway off of Torchwood with the suggestion that they, they would likely not approve it anyway in as much as it was so close to the intersection with Market. So I, I don't believe we were going to be able to do that anyway. We, we kind of kept the staff abreast of what was going on there, as I recall. And there was no, no opposition to that that I saw.
Thank you. I appreciate the history, by the way. Thank you. No more questions?
It's a tough site. I mean, it, I, I was on the board previously and, and when we looked at this for the bank, it's, it's a tough site. And DOT is going to look at it and they're going to determine the best way forward. And that's a tough intersection, period. I mean, I go through it all the time. It's, it's going to be more hoping for the best, it looks like, when you go through there.
This would be a low-traffic impact, what's, what's presently proposed?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a change of use. We looked at this previously and approved it for the bank. Unless members of the board feel strongly, I mean, I look at it as a pretty straightforward application.
I just have a, a comment. I can't help myself. It's actually a recommendation. I, I think the majority of the proposed use seems fine. I did see daycare on there. I don't know that I can ever require this as a condition, but as an environmental engineer, there are gas stations and former dry cleaners very close to this area that may have contamination. And I would just strongly encourage you to consider that in the development, potentially do some testing to see if that, if that use is safe.
If you don't mind, so because this has come back again for a second rezoning, we added, staff added a list of additional uses so we wouldn't have to come back again in case somebody wanted to do something else. If that was a direction we wanted to move forward with, to take that use away, we can, we can do that. That wasn't proposed by the applicant. Again, that was a staff edit.
Is that something that we have any sort of liberty to do, Chair?
Sorry, what was that?
So I was taking, I was looking at the proposed uses of that, that staff added. And one of those was daycare, which gave me pause. The applicant is not requesting that. How would you guys feel about removing that as a condition?
I mean, if the applicant is open to it and there's no objection from the board, it's absolutely something that we could do.
We welcome staff's addition. Help with that for the purposes that she stated. We, we don't want to burden y'all with review of this again as well. I don't believe that the applicant has any opposition to removing a daycare use. Staff had added daycare use to the list of allowable uses. There's some opposition to that from the board. Would you mind to remove the daycare list? It wasn't one we, we asked for.
The owner is fine with that.
Mr. Fentress, could I ask you a quick question? So one of the conditions on here was veterinary services. And Mr. Hitt mentioned about maybe putting in some type of restriction as far as outdoor kennels and pens. So you have, do y'all have any issue with that?
None whatsoever.
Okay. Just want to make sure you understand what that condition is.
Absolutely.
Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Fentress has got one quick question. Have you read all the proposed conditions that staff put together and do you agree with those?
I have. To, to the best of my recognition, they're the same as they were before. But I, I read them just a moment ago when they were on the.
I mean, there are eight there listed. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, they're fine. We're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So before we move forward with a motion, Mr. Fentress, are you requesting a continuance, willing to, or wanting to withdraw this application or directing the board to move forward?
Please move forward.
So we're direct, the applicant has directed the board to move forward with a vote if there is a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the processes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the proposed limited uses are recommended for community mixed-use place type and the project includes additional conditions to reduce impacts on adjacent residential development. Also find recommending approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposal serves an appropriate transition between existing residential and commercial uses. Existing conditions to remain. Number one, retail hours shall be limited to eight AM to seven PM. Number two, the height of the exterior light fixtures shall not exceed twenty-five feet and all exterior luminaries, including security lighting, shall be full cutoff fixtures that are directed downward. Number three, an additional row of vegetation beyond the UDA requirement shall be provided in the buffer area along the northwestern property line. Number four, the location of the dumpster shall be on the south side of the property and screened with vegetation. Additional conditions agreed to by the applicant. The proposed rezoning's principal use shall be limited to retail sales, general, offices for private businesses and professional activities, business service center, daycare, not daycare. for private businesses and professional activities, business service center, daycare...not daycare, sorry, strike that, post office, medical and dental office and clinic, veterinary service with a restriction to not allow outdoor kettles or pens, instructional services and studios, personal services, general. Number two, the back facade of the commercial building facing Torchwood Boulevard must be ecstatically similar as the face of the building. The rear of the building must be screened from Torchwood Boulevard. Number three, additional plannings must be provided along Market Street to qualify for the seventy-five-foot setback set forth by the Special Highway Overlay District. Number four, the existing live oak tree shown on the concept plan shall be retained on site. That is the motion.
As a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Application is approved. At this time, we're roughly halfway through the regular items of business. We will be taking a ten-minute break for those in the audience. We will come back after that, so approximately twenty-five after. Thank you.
Recession is ended. We will move back into the regular items of business. Moving on to item number four. It's a public hearing rezoning request Z two five dash oh eight, request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions as applicant on behalf of six two six Retail Development LLC. Contract purchaser from Black Knight twenty-four LLC, property owner to rezone approximately one point two four acres located at the hundred block of Greenview Drive from CZDB one neighborhood business to a new CZDB one district for the use of general retail offices for professional businesses and other limited uses. This time we'll hear from staff, Mr. Beal.
Thank you Chair, members of board. This application is requested to rezone approximately one point two four acres from a CZDB one to a CZDB one with expanded uses. The property is located on Greenview Drive adjacent to Market Street. The site is bordered by R fifteen zoning to the north, south, east, and west. The lot was rezoned to a CZDB one from a CUD B one in two thousand eighteen to accommodate a car care center or automobile service station and a car wash. This area is part of the special highway overlay district, what's called a shod. From the aerial photography, we can see the car wash on the neighboring lot and the subject lot is vacant aside from the established parking spaces. Here are photos of the property depicting the existing site conditions. Here is an example of a vehicle service station. Here is an example of a two-story office building located on Market Street. This is the previously approved site plan from the two thousand eighteen rezoning consisting of a car wash and car care center. Here is the proposed site plan, the applicant submitted consisting of a fifteen thousand square foot general office building with a variety of proposed uses. There is a state transportation improvement project along the stretch of Market Street, which is the widening of Market Street. There's also a pedestrian accessway that will consist of a multi-use path along the same side of the street as the proposed rezoning. The property has direct full access onto Greenview Drive. The amount of potential traffic generated is not enough to trigger a traffic impact analysis. This proposed rezoning aligns with the existing development pattern along Market Street and could help foster a business-friendly environment that promotes growth, agility, and collaboration. The comprehensive plan designates this property as part of the community mixed-use place type, which focuses on small-scale, compact, mixed-use development patterns that serve all modes of travel and act as an attractor for county residents and visitors. Types of appropriate uses include office, retail, mixed-use, recreational, commercial, institutional, multifamily, and single-family residential. Here are the existing conditions to remain, which focus on retaining the existing trees, prohibited signage, and signage indicating Oak Ridge Lane is a private road. Here are the applicant-proposed conditions, which consist of limiting the uses. The rezoning is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan because the proposed district is in line with the use and density of the community mixed-use place type and helps foster a business-friendly environment that promotes growth, agility, and collaboration. As such, staff recommends, excuse me, approval of the proposal with proposed conditions related to stormwater maintenance, access, and the rear facade. This concludes my presentation. Staff have received no public comments. Tim Lowe with County Engineering is here to answer any further questions. The applicant is also here and has prepared a presentation.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move into the applicant's presentation. Ms. Wolf?
Thank you. I appreciate Brian's summary of everything. I'll be very brief. I think this is a win-win situation. Obviously, the car care center was not developed. The car wash is there. It started off, I believe, as called Fins and now it's called the Whistle Express. The infrastructure, as far as the driveways, the drive aisles and everything are already there. As he said, it's B one, so we're not really changing anything. We could have gone to an O and I, but there was just no reason, since it's a conditional district, to change the zoning on it. It was more of a plan modification. He showed you the original, so our plan basically reduces the amount of building coverage. We pretty much just have to fill in the parking spaces around the existing drive aisle. This will be two-story compared to what would have been a one-story car care center. But circulation is unchanged. We've got the full movement access at the back ends of it, at both Oak Ridge and Greenview, but the front parking lot is a right-out only because of the stem distance from Market Street. So with that, this is an overlay of how we would fill in those parking spaces. And we have no issue with any of the requirements, the conditions that were original or that we have proposed in joint for the rest of the project. So I'm just here to answer questions. The only call I had, we didn't have anyone at the meeting, we did have, I did have a call from a woman on Greenview and she was sort of thrilled because they were a little worried that a car care center would translate into test drives up and down Greenview Drive. So I haven't heard anything in opposition and I don't believe anything has been logged. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Is there anyone else on behalf of the applicant or in support of this application who'd like to be heard? In opposition, I do have Ms. Seitz signed up. You are the only one signed up. You have fifteen minutes if you need it.
Thank you. Hi again. My name is Elizabeth Seitz. I am a resident in the Bay Shore neighborhood on Lost Tree Road. And I just want to start with this presentation. I briefly spoke to Ms. Wolf during the break and clarified that this is not true opposition, I guess you could say, more of concern. Acting on myself and neighbors that I represent, that they have chosen me to represent them as the continued development just spreads like wildfire through our part of town. So with that, I would just like to say, I have spoken at a couple of the land use meetings representing myself again and fellow neighbors, and this is actually the second time I have been involved in the project that Ms. Wolf has led. And we are pro-thoughtful, responsible growth in our area. So I hope my following comments represent that. I imagine by now with Ms. Wolf's resume, she might be used to the Grim Reaper reputation from neighbors of areas that she goes to develop. And I just want to say that I grew up in East Tennessee. I had to drive twenty-five minutes to get to Target and an hour to go school shopping. I am all for sustainable, and when I say small town, East Tennessee, a sustainable, self-sufficient hometown. However, there is a big difference between self-sufficient and excessive overdevelopment without the due diligence. From the proposal and the staff report I looked at today, I just pulled a few pieces of information. When referring to Market Street, the proposed project is located directly off of a principal arterial that is over capacity. Key words, overcapacity. The planning capacity is just over thirty-seven thousand. The latest traffic volume was forty-three thousand and the current level of congestion was overcapacity by definition. It was noted that the estimated traffic increase for the proposed project is low, falling below the required one hundred peak hour threshold. And it's interesting that that's even a point to me when you're already overcapacity, if you need a traffic analysis at all, when you're already overcapacity. The widening of Market Street, widening of Market Street was also noted as possible relief to the congestion level. Any resident on this side of town can tell you the widening of Marketing Street is already obsolete due to the number of apartment homes and residences that have been approved on our stretch of this road. Two developments opened within the last six months and another one is on the July meeting for the commission. The report continues to discuss the developments, saying this is a section of Market Street that is currently undergoing intense commercial development and extensive residential development in the surrounding area. I mentioned earlier that I've spoken at a meeting that Ms. Wolf was involved in. That specific project is literally not more than a hundred yards, the same type of use than this project right now. Myself and a few other neighbors were particularly involved in negotiating the perimeter fence, the height of the parking lot lights, and if a restaurant was to rent in that space, that it could not have outdoor seating on the backside because the noise would be adjacent to our backyards. These are the types of items that I would hope residents, even though they're excited there's not a car care center there on Greenview Drive, I hope that they would appreciate the experiences we have gone through and the effort that we have put in to try to protect the residential quality of life as this development continues. From participating in meetings, I also have the basic knowledge of the shod. By definition, its purpose is to protect the natural beauty and scenic vistas that exist along designated roadways. It was noted in the staff report that one of the duties of the community mixed land use is to act as an attractor for residents and visitors. It's no secret the amount of incoming growth Wilmington is experiencing. The draw to Wilmington is its history, its natural beauty, its people, its beaches. Not car washes, office buildings, storage units, yet we continue to replace one with the other. We need the trees, we need marshes, we need green space. Lastly, in terms of pictures, we're worth a thousand words and the continued development. Just to share, this is a fox on my front porch. This is a herd of deer in my neighbor's yard. And when we talk about this stormwater impact, this is an impassable entrance to Lost Tree Road off of Bay Shore after a rainstorm in August of last year. Over three feet of water in this entrance and it's only going to get worse with our continued development. While this project is small in comparison, it is one more project that takes away from the beauty of our area, affects our local environment, increases our already congested streets, and affects the quality of life of residents surrounding this land. Thank you for your time and consideration. I urge careful and all-encompassing consideration for all projects, no matter how small. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seitz. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in opposition to the application? Ms. Wolf, you have five minutes for rebuttal?
It will only take a second, just that there is an extremely limited number of uses that are part of that condition and restaurant is not one of them. So for the sake of the folks back Oak Ridge Lane and Greenview Drive, restaurant isn't one of the uses.
Thank you. Ms. Seitz, you have five additional minutes if you'd like it.
I just had one question to clarify. This was in the staff report and it shows this intersection with a red light in place. And I want to clarify, I did not see that on the images that have been earlier presented. If a red light would be put in place here?
Brian, do you know that? I mean, I think with the, with the Market Street improvements, there's a, there is a light on the other side of the road, I think, for a U-turn?
I think it's for the U-turn.
But it's not a full-service light at that intersection that I know of. It's on the other side and I think it's for a U-turn, but that's just from recollection.
Yeah, I have that on the map. I'm not sure. We don't make maps. We have somebody particularly makes the map, so I don't know if you got that information from the Market Street improvements or if Rebecca or Robert have anything to add?
I'm not. Yeah, I don't even, I'm okay.
So there's the left-hand turn that goes into the car wash, but it doesn't go into Greenview Drive.
Yeah, it's just a, yeah, it's just a U-turn. It's just a U-turn.
Can I ask Ryan a question real quick? Ryan, so is the current use only the car care center right now?
Yes, it was approved for a car care center or automobile parts center in conjunction with the car wash. It was a single lot at that point. It was just subdivided in March thirty-first of this year.
Okay, thanks.
So Ms. Seitz, they're gonna, they're looking for the answer to make sure.
I've got the DOT plan and that U-turn is just north of Greenview, so basically it's, it's right about there. And that is right across from the other project that she had talked about. So there'll be a leftover at Alexander at the other end, but this one is where there was some type of light for that U-turn.
Yeah, there's a, there's a turn, an extended turn radius.
There's the bulb for the U-turn, wide sweep.
Near the gas station.
But yeah, there is nothing in front of or at Oak Ridge. This is a total median for all of that frontage.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition during the rebuttal period? At this time, we'll open the discussion up to the board. Mr. Moore?
This is, I'm gonna say fifty-fifty, maybe Cindy and maybe for staff. So looking here at the aerial, obviously, we can't really zoom out. DOT includes a sidewalk, I believe, in their project all the way down because when I'm looking at this.
You can see it there. They just, at the time of this, which is, this is already a year old, the GIS maps don't even have the car wash. But yeah, I believe that that sidewalk is being constructed shortly. You can tell, yeah.
Because I know that the site just, the church has it, the academy has it, yeah, it goes all the way up. Okay, all right, you've answered my question. I thought that was the case. Ms. Seitz is correct. I've driven that area quite a bit, so it's ever-changing every day. So.
Every day.
I don't, I don't, I don't have any issues with this, as far as I'm concerned. We talked about it in general review the other day. I mean, for me, I don't have any issues with it. Stormwater is an infiltration-type of thing? Everything's under the parking lot?
Yes, it was already done. There's going to be a fine line of, I ran some preliminary calculations and I believe that it was sized for all of the impervious surface of both the projects. So whoever their engineer is, if this is approved and moved forward, will just have to calculate what's existing and what's left over in the calculation.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
Fine with it.
All right, Ms. Wolf, would you like the board to move forward with a vote? You've requested continuance or withdraw the motion?
Move forward, please.
Applicant has instructed us to move forward. Is there a motion?
I'd like to present a motion.
Mr. Hitt?
And just real quick, just one point of clarification. On your script, it has, it only lists the newly added conditions. There are also the existing conditions and then the list of limited uses that are also included on that. So if we need to pull up the presentation or look in your staff report under the.
My script includes three existing conditions. My script.
Correct, and then there should be a list of.
And then there are five additional, one applicant-proposed condition and four staff-proposed conditions. I got all of them?
And those are in the script?
Those are in my script. That I received via email. The, the, the early script, you, you do the script, the scripts are in both places. In the first script, they're not there, but in the second.
I apologize for the interruption.
No worries, I found it, thank you. All right, so I'd like to make the following motion. I move to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan, because the project is in line with the use and density of the community mixed-use place type. I also find recommending approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest, because the project helps foster a business-friendly environment that promotes growth, agility, and cooperation. The existing conditions to remain are, one, all existing trees located within the required buffer yards shall be preserved and supplemented as necessary in order to provide a fully opaque screen. In addition, a six-foot-tall solid fence must be installed along the rear buffer yard. Two, flashing, animated, and digital signs shall be prohibited on the property. Three, a sign indicating that Oak Ridge Lane is a private road shall be installed along the right-of-way of Oak Ridge Lane west of the proposed driveway access to the subject site. The applicant-proposed conditions, one, the proposed rezoning principle uses shall be limited to, A, I'm just gonna read them all, I'm not gonna, to know them A, B, C, D, will be limited to banks and/or financial institutions, business service center, offices for private business and professional activities, instructional services and studios, personal services general, no tattoo parlors permitted, and retail sales general. Staff-proposed conditions include, one, an agreement in place for shared maintenance of the parking between car wash and office building. Two, the applicant must provide cross-access easements for the car wash to access Greenview Drive through both driveway locations. Three, the project will have a stormwater management agreement for the shared underground stormwater, or the sub, or the project will be required to obtain permits for a separate underground stormwater system. Any above-ground stormwater system must constitute a substantial devia, any above-ground stormwater system would constitute a substantial deviation to the approved plan and require review and approval through a rezoning. Four, the back facade of the commercial building facing Greenview Drive must be aesthetically similar to the faces of the entire building. The building facade along Market Street shall incorporate a minimum of one building entrance and form-giving elements such as entry overhangs, imperiotic transitions, and wall offsets, materials, and/or finstration. Any pads for HVAC equipment shall be screened from the street by low fencing and/or landscaping.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Application passes. Item number five, public hearing. Rezoning request Z two-five dash oh-nine, request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions as applicant. On behalf of Little Bird Properties LLC, property owner to rezone approximately one-point-seven-seven acres located at a thirty-one-hundred block of Castle Hain Road from R ten residential district to a CZDB-two regional business district for commercial flex space for the use of retail sales, offices for private business and professional activities, restaurant, and other limited uses. Ms. Dos?
Hello again, thank you Chair. Located at three-one-one-one Castle Hain Road, the site was initially zoned R twenty, however, it was rezoned by New Hanover County in twenty-twenty to R ten as part of a larger tract conveyed to Habitat for Humanity for the development of Haven Place subdivision. The county retained this portion for development of a new fire station now located across Castle Hain Road into the north. Shown here in the aerial photo, you can see the parcel and the new recently developed Haven Place subdivision. Here you can see the vacant parcels located along Castle Hain Road corridor and a budding, sorry, images of the property from different angles. This slide shows examples of single-family development. Here are examples of what you might see in a B-two district. Here's the applicant's concept plan. To the east is Castle Hain Road, to the west is New Dawn Drive. This is the shared access for which easements must be provided, along with the stormwater easement prior to the sale or transfer of ownership, as noted in a condition. Here's the location of the approved development to the north. This is an off-site sidewalk and approved pedestrian access from Haven Place subdivision. Here you can see the location of the two buildings totaling twenty-one thousand square feet. Although the storefronts face inward toward the parking lot, there's a condition intended to ensure the facade facing Castle Hain Road does not look like the back of a building. This is the fenced buffer, as noted in the conditions, and here you can see the twenty-foot public access easement, also detailed in the conditions. There's one state transportation improvement project in the area. The Castle Hain Road widening project is currently being designed and could potentially restrict access to right-in, right-out. The proposed development is estimated to generate approximately eighty-two AM and a hundred-and-fifty PM peak hour trips, and as a result, a traffic impact analysis was required for the project. Property currently has full access onto Castle Hain Road through the property to the north, with both being under the same ownership. The approved TIA requires the following improvements. Construct a southbound right-turn lane with seventy-five foot of storage. Design the site access with a stop sign with one ingress lane and two egress lanes, one being a shared-through-left lane and one being, oops, sorry, I got ahead of myself, and one being an exclusive right-turn lane with seventy-five feet of storage. The site access must be designed in accordance with NCDOT and local standards. This specific area is trending toward commercial development. Additional conditions have been offered to mitigate impacts on adjacent residents, and the larger Castle Hain Road corridor has similar parcels that have been rezoned to CB, B-one, B-two, and O and I districts near the rights for a commercial node from the original R twenty district. The comprehensive plan designates this property as being part of the community mixed-use place type. Community mixed-use includes commercial uses and encourages infill development. In addition to serving as a transition between Castle Hain Road and neighboring residential uses, the proposed project will provide services to nearby residents. Staff's recommendation is based on policy guidance of the twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Since the proposed project is in line with current commercial development patterns and rezoning approvals in the Castle Hain Road corridor, and would be compatible with the recently-approved Little Bird Properties rezoning to the north, staff recommends approval of the request with five conditions related to a list of permitted uses, privacy fencing, a public easement, the building facade, and stormwater and access easements. Should the rezoning be approved, development of the site will be subject to additional development review. This concludes my presentation. Mr. Chmlo is here to answer any questions from stormwater engineering, and the applicant is here and has prepared a presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Dos. Cindy, we'll hear from the applicant at this time.
Thank you again for the record, I'm Cindy Wolf, and I appreciate Amy's summary. As she pointed out, the project that is just to the north here was rezoned back in the beginning of two-thousand-twenty-three, I believe, and it is already CZDB-two. That was approved for a workshop at the back of the site, but a flex-style space at the front. In, while we were sitting here, was about the time that the fire station was moving, and that this property became available, and he was able to purchase it from the county. So the plan in place actually reduced the size of that building at the top, because this way, all three buildings would have a similar appearance, same size. The cross-access, of course, is no problem with the ownership being the same on both, and we accept the condition that access easements would be recorded, were there any other issue there. We paid a lot of attention to the fact that Habitat has their residential community to the south and west of us with fencing. The other thing that is part of this and the conditions is that these two buildings have mu- more limited uses to them than the building to the top, which includes general contractor or contractors' offices. So what we'd expect really on this is that the commercial building to the west is the types of uses that could certainly use a rear access service yard, but we don't foresee it being, you know, more intense types of uses against that fence. The TIA was completed, it has been approved, there's the approval letter, and she described the types of improvements that are going to be included. And with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions. I think as a composite project, it'll be attractive, it will provide the types of uses that the neighbors that are being built right now in Haven Place, and from what I hear, some other residential projects along Castle Hain Road in the near future will enjoy the, any types of services that are at these types of centers. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. The only other person I have signed up, I believe, is your client?
That's correct.
Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak in support of the application? Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in opposition? All right, Cindy, you have, you can.
I'm good, I'm here and available for questions.
You could rebut yourself if you'd like. Or we'll move into board discussion. Any questions you have for the applicant or staff members of the board? Now's the time.
I got one question to ask, Cindy. Looking at the plan on the screen right now, it shows pretty substantial buffering along Castle Hain Road. My only concern there is that you make sure that the rear of the building doesn't look like the rear of most commercial buildings.
That is condition number five, the back facade of the commercial building, well, I'm sorry, it's the other one. The building facade along Castle Hain Road shall incorporate a minimum of one building entrance and form-fitting elements. So we've already figured on that.
Any finstration?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm guessing that there will probably be five small entrances and window, you know, storefront windows, that type of thing, but at a minimum, it would be a single.
I just didn't want to ride by and look at their HVAC equipment sitting on the side of the road. Thank you.
We have aside, we have made amends for that.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Dumpster locations, I see one.
That, I've kept it away from the residence, it's in between the two buildings.
You think one, one dumpster is gonna be enough?
It, it might have to get larger with those three parking spaces.
But being that general location.
That's where we would commit to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Cindy, I'm gonna try to ask this question, it's more shifted to staff, because I'm not gonna open a Pandora's Box for this. So looking at this New Dawn Drive, just stubs right there and stops. I know that this project, as of probably three months ago, was still kind of under construction as far as infrastructure, and are there homes out there now? I think there are some.
Yeah. Two are occupied, and there are about five on the way.
Is there?
I'm with the board.
Is there an opportunity from a staff perspective? We just sit here, had a full-blown conversation, or you guys had a full-blown conversation about connectivity. Obviously, we have a stubbed road, is there an opportunity to go back to Habitat and maybe look at producing another lot there? Because it's never going to go anywhere.
But why would there be a lot there?
No, to put one there, in other words.
Get rid of the.
Get rid of the stub.
Oh, oh, oh.
Because you have a business.
Yeah, you would not interconnect with the business, certainly. I mean, but there are water and sewer running up the middle of the road.
I understand, I'm, that's why I said I'm not trying to open up Pandora's Box.
Okay.
So, but I'm just putting that maybe as an opportunity, that there could be another opportunity there for Habitat.
I guess if they dug up the water line, but I think it was intended to stub at the same place for circulation.
I get it, I mean, it was intended to be residential next to it, because that's technically what it was before this came in.
I'm just saying, there's already water under that road.
I understand that, I understand that, I understand that. I, I get what I'm asking, but the lot, the stubbed-out road is gonna sit there like that forever. So if there's an opportunity for Habitat to come in and take a look at it, I'm just gonna leave it there and just.
Or put a basketball goal there.
Or we'll just put a basketball goal there.
Well, and I'll be happy to bring those types of things up, I'm, I'm on the Habitat Board.
Is there any other further discussion at the board? All right, Ms. Wolf, how do you direct the board to move forward?
I'd like to move forward, please.
All right. We've been directed by the applicant to move forward. If there's a motion, we will entertain one.
I will make one, since I opened up Pandora's Box. All right, I move to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan, because the proposed uses and intensity align with existing development patterns along the corridor, and could provide services and support to nearby residences. I also find recommending approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest, because the proposed concept plan is in line with the current development patterns with the following conditions. Proposed conditions, number one, uses will be limited to animal grooming service, veterinary service, kennel or daycare prohibited, business service center, offices for private business and professional activities, personal services, general, tattoo parlors are prohibited, instructional services and studios, retail sales, general, and restaurant. Number three, condition, a solid privacy fence shall be installed along the southern and western portions of the project, as shown on the concept plan. Number four, a twenty-five-foot-wide public access easement shall be established along the property boundary with Castle Hain Road. Sufficient space must be provided to accommodate both the easement and the required streetyard landscaping. Number five, the back facade of the commercial building facing Haven Place and Castle Hain Road must be aesthetically similar to faces of the buildings. The building facade along Castle Hain Road shall incorporate a minimum of one building entrance and form-giving elements such as entry overhangs and periodic transitions and wall offsets, materials and/or finstration. Any pads for HVAC equipment shall be screened from the street view by low fencing and/or landscaping. Condition number six, the partial shall either be recombined under common ownership or before ownership of any properties transferred to another person or entity, and access easement and maintenance agreement and stormwater easement and maintenance agreement be established and recorded with the register of deeds. That's the motion.
Has been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, public hearing rezoning request Z two-five dash one-oh. Request by Terry Henry with Pause For People Incorporated applicant and property owner to rezone approximately eleven-point-nine-one acres. Located at fifty-one-oh-one Transformation Lane from an R fifteen residential and B-two regional business districts to a PD planned development district for a dog training center for uses including kennels, indoor and outdoor training areas, offices and lodging for trainees and employees. Mr. Dickerson?
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately eleven-point-two-four acres from R fifteen residential district and B-two regional business to a PD planned development district for the Pause For People campus. The site is currently zoned R fifteen and B-two, and is largely surrounded by residential zoning, with some B-two zoning to the west. The western portion of the site was rezoned to B-two in nineteen-eighty-nine as part of a larger one-hundred-twenty-acre rezoning. The aerial photography shows the existing Pause For People campus on the site. The complex to the west is the NCDOT district offices. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles. I will show these in a larger size on the next few slides. Here is an image of the entrance to their campus, along with a directional sign to the different buildings. Here are two other images of the campus, including an office building as well as a kennel and lodging for trainees and employees. The applicant's proposed concept plan shows the existing campus, as well as the three planned phases of the. phases of the PD. There is an existing office, lodging for students and employees, and two existing live work units. There is also outdoor recreation for dog training. The campus currently has one existing kennel. The first phase of the PD involves a proposed vocational trade school, and the second and third phases of the PD include two new kennels on the property. This table shows the square footage of the uses that are existing on the site and for the three planned phases of the campus. The site currently has access on Blue Clay Road. There is some residential development in this area, including the Sidbury Crossing Apartments to the south and the Blue Bay Townhomes to the north near Holly Shelter Road. The existing campus is a relatively low traffic generator. The additional uses proposed on the site would also be generally low traffic generators and this site would not require a TIA. The Pause For People campus has been operating as such on this site since 2018. This planned development would be an expansion of uses on their current campus. The project is a generally low traffic generator and is both institutional and civic in nature. This portion of the Blue Clay Road is largely low-density single-family residential, and there is some higher-density residential development to the north as well as the Sidbury Road corridor, which is seeing significant residential growth due to the extension of public water and sewer to the area through the county's last frontier project. The 2016 comprehensive plan classifies this area as general residential. The project is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan, which recommends low-impact civic and institutional uses like the proposed development in general residential areas. Planned developments require terms and conditions document to be submitted with the application. This encompasses several things, including allowed uses for the site which are described in the staff report. These allowed uses include dwellings, animal shelter, vocation, trade school, outdoor recreation establishment, animal grooming and kennel. The applicant also proposed specific setbacks for structures in the development of 25 feet in the front, 15 feet on the sides and 20 feet in the rear. Staff have recommended increasing the side setback to 20 feet as an additional buffer from the nearby residential uses. Lastly, the applicant is also proposing to conserve vegetation on the site around the perimeters in excess of the 20 feet width minimum the ordinance prescribes for the landscape buffers. Staff's recommendation is based on the policy guidance of the 2016 comprehensive plan, zoning considerations and technical review. Staff found the proposed planned development district generally consistent with the comprehensive plan because it provides a generally low-impact civic and institutional development to a general residential area. As a result, staff recommends approval of the proposed development with amendment to the side setback as noted. Lastly, I'll add that if approved, new development on the site would be subject to TRCN zoning compliance review processes in order to ensure full compliance with all ordinance requirements. This concludes staff's presentation. Mr. Tim Low is here with county engineering to answer any questions that may come up under stormwater topics. The applicant is here and has also prepared a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Hello, my name is Danielle Cockerham, I am here on behalf of Terry Henry and the Pause For People executive team. I just want to make sure everybody has a good understanding of Pause For People, so we've been in business for the last 26 years, working with service dogs with childrens, veterans and civilians who have experienced trauma. We relocated out of the northern Virginia area down to Wilmington in 2011 to start our partnership with UNC Wilmington. I have a brief video here, if you all are remainable to watching it, it will still keep us within our timeline, I promise, and it will give you an overview of the activities that are currently transforming the lives of people with disabilities here in the New Hanover County area as well as across 23 states.
My name is Kiria, I'm the founder and executive director of Pause For People, and Addie's Way is our national headquarters and the nation's first campus for canine-centric post-traumatic growth. Pause For People started small, just my dad and I, and his first service dog was Addie. Addie changed his life, and with that little spark, we have continued on and grown to train over 1,300 dogs, and we now have this headquarters here at Addie's Way. We'd like to take you on a tour of our campus here at Addie's Way, as well as show you the entire process of how service dogs can transform lives. The majority of our dogs are purpose-bred, which means they are born right here with us at Addie's Way. Their life begins at the Brielle Puppy Development Center, where their training regimen and schedule starts at three days old. A team of volunteers, interns and staff members staffs the Brielle Puppy Development Center While the puppies are still too small to leave, they have plenty to do right there within the Puppy Development Center. There's a STEM room full of things for them to explore and learn about. We use these things to build their confidence and curiosity with enrichment items and even things such as masks and costumes. Once the puppies turn six weeks old, they begin going on a regimented outing schedule in puppy pouches.
Whoa. I like that.
This is a process we developed so they could start experiencing sensory inputs that the world provides while still being safe before they're fully vaccinated. Once they're fully vaccinated, you'll see them starting to learn how to walk on a leash in a tiny little puppy vest out in many environments in our community.
Good boy.
Once our puppies are approximately 18 weeks old, they leave for our Pause For Prisons program. Our Pause For Prisons program takes place in both male and female correctional facilities and forms a unique rehabilitative program for both the inmate trainers and the dogs. The inmate trainers spend countless hours teaching these dogs their advanced obedience and disability tasks as the dogs grow and mature. The dogs rotate back to our headquarters in Wilmington every few months. We lovingly call those visits furlough trips. Developing these prison programs allowed us to grow and begin training highly customized service dogs for individuals with disabilities. This then presented us with a challenge, because while we could train these dogs within these institutions, we didn't have enough volunteers to help us finish their public access training. Therein came the idea of developing a program where college students could help us get the dogs out and about in the community. After many years, this partnership was forged with UNCW and we relocated Pause For People's headquarters to here in Wilmington. Our partnership with UNCW is the only program in the country that offers an academic undergraduate minor in assistance dog training. Our student trainers help complete the dog's public access phase of training all around the community and then assist us in transfer training the dogs to their final recipients. Once the dogs have spent about one semester with our UNCW students, they're usually ready to bump. Bump is the term that we have coined over the years for the process of matching a dog to his recipient or client. A bump is kind of like speed dating, and bumps currently take place in our Cheney Dormitory. Clients who've been accepted into our program after the rigorous application process come to a bump and tell our trainers and staff their story of why they are seeking a service or facility dog from us. Afterwards, they meet a pre-selected group of dogs one by one, and that's where the magic happens. We watch for chemistry, body language on both the part of the humans and the dogs, and it's uncanny they tell us who they choose every time. From there, the team embarks on intervention transfer training. ITT is our proprietary trauma resiliency training, which allows the clients to learn skills that will help them reclaim their lives. Our ITT process begins with clients entering into our Cheney Dormitory building for several weeks of immersion training. This begins with a lot of classroom lecture-style learning and then moves on to working in public in the community. Through several weeks of working with their dogs under the supervision of our highly skilled trainers, the clients begin to develop the skills needed to really use the dogs to control, regulate and mitigate their symptoms and challenges. One thing that sets us apart in the industry is that this team training is not a finite period of time, but rather is dependent upon the amount of time that each team needs to learn and grow together. Training is highly customized and everyone's training culminates in the ADI International Public Access Test to ensure the dogs exceed all standards of quality and performance. Once a client and dog pass their final public access test and earn their red vest, their work isn't quite done. We require that they return to Wilmington once every year to recertify live and in person. We maintain ownership of all of our dogs for life and transfer them to their client or handler on a custody contract. By doing so, we're able to continue to provide the liability and health insurance for every team for the entirety of their career. There is always someone that they can call 24/7 with any problem or question, be it something about training or healthcare. When our dogs do retire, they stay with the client and their family who they have grown to love, they just get to live a retired life. And if the client needs another service dog, their process is expedited to receive a successor dog from us as quickly as possible. Our hope is that we can become part of a client's family for as long as they need the support the service dog can provide. We've discussed how we utilize our Brielle Puppy Development Center and our Cheney Dormitory and Dining Facility. Next, let's take a look at some of the additional facilities on our Addie's Way campus. Our Wyatt Agility and Confidence Field allows us the unique opportunity to expose our dogs to confidence-building obstacles without leaving our campus, while our Oatley Training Field provides a safe space where dogs can play and exercise off-leash and also safely practice critical commands such as off-leash recalls. There are two other buildings on our campus, our Riley Administration Building, which houses all of our offices and administrative needs, and our Brinkley Programming Building, which currently provides a residential apartment for our onsite facility manager. Our long-term plans for our programming building include classes for art, trauma-informed yoga and music therapy to accompany the on-campus training our clients receive. We are so excited for our future expansion plans, including the development of our Brady Training Center. This facility will allow us a large, open, climate-controlled space to train with the dogs year-round. The Brady Training Center will also serve as a space for larger events and classrooms. We are humbled and grateful that the sponsorship and support we have received from the community has allowed us to grow to having this beautiful and rehabilitative campus. Thanks for learning more about Pause For People. We hope you'll come visit us at Addie's Way and get involved in our mission of training assistance dogs to transform lives. Just to give you some statistics, currently, we have about 300 active teams working nationwide, over half of those are in the state of North Carolina, 1,300, over 1,300 dogs in our 26-year history of being in business. And one thing that we are really proud of is every dog is valued on our books by our CPAs at about $100,000 each, and we've managed to keep our overhead percentage, even with the addition of our Addie's Way campus, less than 5%. So none of us on the executive team or anybody on staff is putting that money in our pockets, it's going right back to our clients and the dogs. Just innovation and action, we are one of 80 accredited service dog organizations in the United States, and we are only one of five that will work with civilians who have experienced things like sexual trauma and are living with PTSD and the after effects of those. Many of our clients report that they wouldn't be alive today without their support of their service dog and the Pause For People team, so we look forward to this opportunity to hopefully continue to expand our campus and transform lives. Why we moved a new training building, as echoed in the bill, in the video, is for that climate-controlled space for clients, our community volunteers, our UNC Wilmington students. None of us like to be outside in July or in April during the rainy season. Having a new training building will also allow us to better meet our clients with disabilities and unique needs so that they have more comfortable space to train with their service dogs, and it will allow us to continue to partner with New Hanover County and its various entities, again, to grow that community impact, have more inclusivity, accessibility and have more stronger community networks. It's not just a training center to us, it's, again, allowing us to transform lives and be able to help more people every single year that need these powerful service dogs.
My name is George Zimmerman, I'm the project manager that kind of helped the organization get to where it is now, what you've seen in the video. I'm the project manager on this new proposed building, and it's essentially an open space training center, a 60-by-80-foot building with a 30-by-60 building that's attached as a support building. We maintained across the campus some very traditional and beautiful aesthetics. We wanted to be campus-like, and we worked hard with our partners at Becker Morgan to make sure the design of this new building is consistent with everything else we have on our campus now. And, let's see here. Thank you. So what we're essentially asking is a rezoning. We're currently zoned as an R15-B2, and the B2 is more towards this left-hand side of the campus, that's associated with that big DOT track that was off to the left. But the rest of the campus is R15 predominantly, previously it was the Yahweh Center, a place for children, summer camp, and it went into fall, and we took it from them and created the campus that you see now. And essentially, client living, student living in the puppy center, and the raising of the puppies is what the campus is all about. The new building, the open training center in that middle section there, would enhance our capability, as Danielle said, that's our immediate need for the campus. Longer term, we show the purple expansion, that would be the puppy building expanding. We need more and more and more puppies, so we would expand that. And then, the last part is that deep purple up to the left, we'd like to put a small indoor Aqua Center on the campus for dog training, but for client training, a lot of our clients are disabled, so Aqua Training would be a really nice enhancement for them and the dogs. So we want to go from a B2-R15 zoning to essentially a planned development district for the use that we've taken you through. That concludes our presentation.
All right, thank you. There are multiple people signed up for the, and I'm assuming they're all with the applicant. Is there anyone who didn't get a chance to speak that had signed up? I do not have anyone in opposition. If the applicant does have more to communicate to us, there's five additional minutes that we'd give you. If not, we can close that portion of the application down and move into board discussion.
No, we're good, we have representatives from Becker Morgan here to help answer any non-dog or client-related questions on my behalf.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know that. I mean, first off, I want to start off by just saying, we really appreciate the video that you were able to show us, I think that it was invaluable to us as a board and to members of the community to know that you're out there and to know what you do and the services that you provide. Obviously, you guys are running a heck of an operation, and I think that we all value having you in our community. And so I commend you for the work that you're doing, and, you know, we do believe in having folks like you here and trying to work with you to make sure that we can keep you here. The PD is a really interesting use for this property and for the phases that you guys have proposed. I do think it works really well, just as a comment on the design plan and what you guys are proposing. It seems to fit really well with the surrounding area and ultimately what's out there now. And, you know, generally speaking, I think it's the perfect type of use for that property and for what you guys planned. What did my colleague say? What did my colleague say?
Mr. Chair, I have two things to say. One, there was a comment that one, the young lady mentioned that she had one thing to be proud of. Y'all have much more than one thing to be proud of. The other comment, as I think it was Mr. Roman, said that we all need more puppies, and yes, sir, we all need more puppies. Thank you for what you do.
So I'm going to echo our chair's comments. He's somebody who's had a, not an immediate family member, but a family member who's had a service dog. I've seen it on the, obviously, the service side of it. The video was pretty enlightening watching how you get to that part of it, but watching that process was pretty intriguing, so I commend y'all for what you do. Just a little bit of food for thought, I'm not sure if there are future expansion plans past this. So this is maybe more for Becker Morgan. I do notice that you have, I believe, one stormwater facility, but y'all may look long-term to kind of do kind of a master plan stormwater. That's something that projects like this, as you grow, can kind of catch you. And then you're like, oh, great, we can't grow like we wanted to grow. So just kind of food for thought, but commend y'all for what you do in the community.
I just want to say thank you guys for what you do. And, you know, I'd be delighted to to do my first recommendation here if anybody else has any thoughts.
If the applicant would come back up to the podium, somebody, whoever would like to be the representative. So before we move forward with a motion, I need to ask all applicants whether or not they would direct our board to move forward with a vote, would like to request a continuance, or would like to withdraw their application.
We would love it if you go to vote.
All right. The applicant has directed us to move forward. There's a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'm going to move to recommend approval of the proposed PD rezoning with the attached terms and conditions documented with amendments noted. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because it provides a generally low-impact civic and institutional development to a general residential area. I also find recommending approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the expansion of the facility would provide a benefit to the citizens of the county with greater opportunities for community service and involvement. And then I have a staff recommended amendment here. Side setbacks within the PD shall be 20 feet from the property line. And that is all I note in the recommendation that I have in front of us.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
How can you say no?
Motion carries.
How cool is that?
He had a weird look.
All right, we're moving on to the final item on our agenda. The final item on tonight's agenda is a preliminary forum for a special use permit application. The purpose of this preliminary forum is to facilitate an open and transparent discussion of the special use permit applications and to provide an opportunity for public comments and questions. Please note that per state law, the planning board will not be making a decision or a recommendation this evening. Instead, the decision on the applications will be made during the Board of Commissioners' quasi-judicial hearing, where public participation will be limited to parties with standing and witnesses providing evidence through sworn testimony. Anyone interested in speaking in support or opposition of the project should make sure they've signed in to speak tonight at this meeting, regardless of whether or not they have standing in this matter. Staff will introduce the application. Then the applicant will be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation, and there will be 20 minutes total for public questions and comments. The applicant will have five minutes to address those questions and comments. Afterward, the board members will then provide their comments and ask any questions they might have. At the end, staff will give an overview of the next steps in the special use permit process, and we will then close the forum. Special use permit S25-02, a request by Sam Potter with Equitas Law Partners LLP as applicant on behalf of Hoosier Daddy LLC, property owner, for a special use permit for an additional dwelling allowance for additional density up to 10.2 dwelling units per acre in an R-15 residential district on approximately 43.50 acres located at 5741 Carolina Beach Road. At this time, Mr. Farrell?
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. As you just heard, this is a preliminary forum for a special use permit for an additional dwelling allowance in an R-15 district. First, I'll give an overview of the preliminary forum and the criteria used in considering these projects before getting into the specifics of the request. Preliminary forums allow the planning board to provide advisory, review, comments, and suggestions to the applicant and the public on potentially relevant and material evidence, findings of fact, and issues or areas the Board of Commissioners may need more information on in order to reach a required conclusion. Please note, since this is a preliminary forum, neither the planning board or staff will be making a recommendation on this project. The Board of Commissioners will need to hold a quasi-judicial hearing, which is a formal type of hearing that requires the board to determine whether a project meets four required findings: that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and approved; the use meets all required conditions and specifications of the Unified Development Ordinance; the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the use is a public necessity; and the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan, is submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the comprehensive land use plan. The property subdivision between the Carolina Beach Road quarter to the west and single-family development to the east and south. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles, which includes some existing curb infrastructure installed last year. The parcels were originally zoned R-15 in the 1970s. At the time, the purpose of the district was to provide lower density due to the need for private wells and septic systems. Since then, public water and sewer have become available in the area. The project proposes 444 dwelling units at a maximum density of 10.2 dwelling units per acre. The site is accessed through Ironwood Drive to the south and proposes three new road stubs for future interconnectivity. The concept plan includes detached single-family development adjacent to the Tarrant Woods subdivision, multifamily apartments on the western side of the site closest to Carolina Beach Road, which transitions through open space to attach single-family homes. The project also includes a multifamily building and amenity towards the center of the site. As noted in the staff report, the amenity center has a proposed height of 50 feet, which is above the maximum height allowed in the R-15 district. There are also three new areas for stormwater management throughout. Additional dwelling allowances can increase the density of certain zoning districts with the approval of a special use permit. The ordinance contains supplementary standards for additional dwelling allowances regarding density, open space, and impervious surface limitations. The ordinance standards are different from a typical performance residential subdivision. For example, the base density can be increased up to a maximum of 10.2 dwelling units per acre in the R-15 district. The minimum open space requirement is 35%. There is an impervious surface limit of 40%, which this project proposes a full 40% with approximately 7% pervious pavement. There's a perimeter setback of 25 feet, which is slightly higher than the setback for slightly higher than the setback for performance residential. And structures over 25 feet tall, up to the maximum of 40 feet, allowed in the R-15 district are required to meet additional setbacks. As we mentioned earlier, the site is currently accessed by Manassas Drive through the Tarrant Woods subdivision. As I mentioned, there are three new road stubs. The first is a connection to the Coastal Christian property to the north. Another provides a connection to Rosa Parks Lane and Unimproved Dirt Road. Any unimproved dirt roads serving more than three homes or lots must be brought up to current road standards or show evidence the roadway predates October 1st, 1969. Additional evidence would be required to show that Rosa Parks Lane could be used for future access. The final stub extends towards Carolina Beach Road and dead ends into the other property that was not included in this request. Those parcels are currently owned by the developer, but no conditions have been included to guarantee a future connection to Carolina Beach Road. The project is estimated to generate over 100 AM and PM peak hour trips, which triggers the ordinance requirements for traffic impact analysis. The application included a TIA approval letter for a TIA that analyzed a lower unit count and different land use type in the project under consideration. DOT and the WMPO have stated that they will need to reevaluate that approval to determine whether any changes are necessary to the recommended improvements. The comprehensive plan designates this property as general residential and urban mixed use. The majority of the property is general residential, which encourages single-family and duplex residential development at a maximum density of eight dwelling units per acre. The urban mixed use place type promotes multifamily and higher-density single-family development to provide a range of housing types, opportunities, and choices. The urban mixed use place type does not recommend a maximum density. Because of the general nature of place type borders, sites located in proximity to the boundaries between place types could be appropriately developed with either place type allowing site-specific features and evolving development patterns in the surrounding area to be considered. As a reminder from earlier, when the Board of Commissioners evaluates the request for approval during a quasi-judicial hearing, they must determine that the following four conditions are met: that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and approved; the use meets all required conditions and specifications of the Unified Development Ordinance; the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the use is a public necessity; and the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan, is submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the comprehensive land use plan from New Hanover County. In addition, because of the quasi-judicial nature of commissioners' hearings, any testimony for or against the request must be provided during that hearing. And again, the purpose of the preliminary forum is for the board to discuss components of the proposal that are not clear or where additional information is needed to understand the project, provide advice to the applicant on the presentation they will be making at the Board of Commissioners' meeting, advise the parties speaking in opposition on what they may want to consider when preparing for the Board of Commissioners' meeting, and advise to both parties on potential issues that could be addressed before the public hearing. This concludes this part of my presentation. County engineering is present, and the applicant is present and is prepared to present.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Mr. Farrell, excuse me. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant. You have 20 minutes.
Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Corey Lee. I'm an attorney here in Wilmington with Equitas Law Partners. I work with Mr. Sam Potter, and we represent the applicant. My client, Mr. James Yopp, is here tonight, should you have any questions for the developer. As the chairman mentioned at the outset of this meeting, you have had a heavy caseload this evening, so I'm going to keep my presentation relatively brief, given the spirit and purpose of this hearing. But I do want to give you a brief overview of our project and address some of staff's additional considerations that they brought up this evening. To start, I want to just kind of orient you to where we are. I'm sure you're all familiar with it, but with monuments that we all drive past every day, the star is where our project is located, that like northwestern corner. And this is really close to the new development where Target is being put, the intersection of South College Road and Carolina Beach. And as Mr. Farrell mentioned, Tarrant Woods Development is just to the south. The majority of my presentation is going to be focused on staff's considerations and just basically noting for all of you, giving you that additional information that Mr. Farrell said was not available at this point. The first note for all of you is really quickly regarding the building height. There was an indication that one of the buildings was 50 feet. That was an oversight on the part of one of our engineers, and our client, of course, is going to comply with the height requirements of the UDO. So just want to make sure that that's on the record and abundantly clear to all of you. The second point is, Mr. Farrell mentioned, given the split place types that this property falls within, kind of questioning whether the additional density going to that maximum density makes the most sense. We think it does for several reasons, but most importantly being, if you look at how the property is oriented and you consider the surrounding development, the corridor along Carolina Beach Road is, as you all know, a commercial development. And the comprehensive land use plan places specific focus on having transitional land use types. And as you all know, Tarrant Woods is a lower-density development. So we think that the development types along this corridor, and particularly at this site, with the density that we've proposed, makes sense to ensure that you have a transitional buffer between the lower-density development to the south and to the east versus the Market Street corridor that is predominantly heavily commercial. The third and potentially most important consideration, I've heard this evening many discussions about interconnectivity, connections, and we all know how critical that is. And so to address those concerns that Mr. Farrell rightly brings up, Rosa Parks Lane is, at this point, not an access point for this development. In terms of that northwestern connection that you see stubbed out, it's right off of the roundabout, says it's a 45-foot private right-of-way. That is intended to be a connection. It is part of our existing traffic impact analysis and is one of the phases of our required improvements. My client does own that property. It's under their control, and they have every intention of complying with the requirements of that TIA at such time as the phasing is appropriate and the infrastructure needs to be installed. And in terms of the traffic impact analysis and its applicability to this development, we are in talks with the appropriate members of our engineering team to ensure that that TIA is appropriate, adequate, and ensures that the infrastructure that's necessary according to NC DOT and WMPO standards is installed. At this point, we've not had any communications from the WMPO or NC DOT regarding updates to our TIA, but again, we are in talks with an engineer, with our traffic engineer and with others, to ensure that our TIA is accurate and contemplates all necessary improvements. We are welcome, or I welcome your questions, and I'm glad to answer them at the appropriate time, as the chairman indicated. And thank you for the opportunity to present this this evening.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll hear from anyone who would like to be heard on this matter. We do have time for questions, public questions and comments. I do have folks signed up, both, I believe, the ones in support of the application are mostly with the applicant, and we do have members or members of the opposition who have signed up as well. So I'm going to go down the list, and when you hear your name, please come up to the podium, and you will be given an opportunity to make your comments or ask any of your questions that you would have. I think it says Shaclin Bunge? Is it Sean?
Sean Bunge, sir.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm used to it with a weird last name like that.
I'm blaming it on the handwriting.
All right. Good evening. My name is Sean Bunge. I live at 6119 Tarrant Road. We're here again tonight, again being the word here, because the developer refuses to listen to anyone, not the board, the planning board, not the Board of Commissioners, and certainly not the community and residents that's lives are directly impacted by this proposal. This is a repeated attempt to force high-density development into a clearly inappropriate location that isn't just misguided. It's a blatant show of disrespect for the governing decisions already made and the community that calls this area home. When the developer is told again and again that the density is a major issue, what do they do? They increase the density. This isn't collaboration. This is a persistence as a tactic of erosion. Public trust is not something to be worn down through resubmittals. It's clear to anyone watching that this process is being abused. For many years, or for many reasons, we are formally requesting a continuance tonight. Members of the board, you have the authority to continue this forum, and we speak strongly asking you to exercise that authority. It's under UDO Section 10.2. It's under UDO Section ten dot two dot seven A four, which exclusively or explicitly states the body conducting the public hearing or preliminary forum may, on its own motion or the request of any person, to continue the public hearing or preliminary forum to a fixed date, time, and place. The community received minimum legal required notice and was left scrambling to prepare. To present a proper case under quasi-judicial processes, the counsel, engineers, traffic experts, appraisers, and stormwater specialists, we were quoted upwards of fifty thousand dollars. Many of the professionals declined to even help, citing that they have connections with the developer or fear future harming their business in the future. This is not how the public process should work. This is power being used to suppress public input. And now, let's set aside any of the procedural issues and talk about the concerns about the project itself. This proposal includes four hundred and forty-four new multifamily units shoved into the heart of a single-family community. The other surrounding neighborhoods are also single-family communities. This is not harmonious with the character or the comprehensive plan for the area. No new roads have been approved to support the influx of traffic. The proposed connecting road to the undeveloped properties hasn't even been built, yet the developer continues using the failing roads with heavy construction equipment. This impacts property values and, more importantly, creates material risks and public safety. There is no plan to expand the school capacity. Despite our schools being beyond capacity already, no new schools, no expansions, no relief, just more students in overcrowded classrooms driven by the lure of increased tax revenue. This increased tax base means nothing if it comes at the cost of student safety and academic integrity. There are also no new flood or stormwater mitigation plans. Our roads are deteriorating, drainage systems are failing, and the surrounding, and I'll use this in quotes, drained panicle soil stays wet year-round. We all know what happens when it rains. That's why in October twenty-two, or two thousand and eight, the Board of Adjustment denied a prior request for expansion in this same tract of land. They cited Section fifty-one dot one dash two dash eleven B of the New Hanover County zoning ordinance, formerly Section twenty-one dot five dash two. We have included copies of that ordinance for your reference. We are still unsure how the current homes in Tarran Woods were approved, given these conditions. It is a clear and continuing public safety concern. The last time the zoning request for this magnitude went before the Board of Commissions in two thousand and twenty-three, it was denied. The board concluded it would increase traffic along a major arterial corridor and was incompatible with the surrounding community. This project has fewer, has, or that project had fewer units than this one. Every concern raised then applies still. After just two days of rain during last year's Tropical Cyclone Eight, Tarran Woods saw thirteen to sixteen inches of standing water in our streets. Not during a hurricane, just a storm. Now imagine twenty acres of additional impervious surface on land five to ten feet lower than the surrounding neighborhoods. That's a literal bowl where water collects and no plan to manage it. Imagine a storm surge of even a Category One hurricane. It's not a hypothetical. We've lived it, and we know we'll live it again. One of the most serious safety concerns here is emergency evacuation. I know I brought it up numerous times to this board. We have one evacuation route, which is US four-twenty-one, which is also the emergency evacuation for Brunswick Nuclear Plant. Based on population estimates that were at least ten to fifteen years old, this single route could easily bottleneck in a true crisis. The addition of thousands of residents in surrounding areas, and now the proposal of additional hundreds more, will make this route dangerously impassable during an emergency. This proposal makes a bad situation worse, and that is grossly irresponsible. We also want to state for the record, our neighborhood can't afford the burden of this development, or this developer is offloading on us. How are we expected to restructure our already deficient covenants to accommodate multifamily housing, rentals, additional amenities, road maintenance, and flood infrastructure when we can't afford to repair what we've already been left with? This developer has walked away from their obligations and now expects the community and the county to absorb that damage. We are asking you to say no again. The people of Tarran Woods, Monkey Junction, and Mason Borough have been clear. The planning board has been clear. The Board of Commissioners has been clear. The only party refusing to listen is this developer. We urge you to stand firm, to protect the integrity of your own prior decisions, and to make protection of residents that you, that were appointed and elected to serve. A digital copy of all the supporting documents and photos has been submitted to both the planning board and the Board of Commissioners and entered into the public comments record via Google Drive. A copy of the change.org petition and additional supporting documents has also been provided to the attorney. Tonight, we respectfully are asking you to firmly let, one, that you grant a continuance to allow the community time to prepare a proper expert response, and, two, that you recommend denial of this irresponsible special use permit request firmly and without compromise. Developers who do not respect the community don't deserve to reshape it. You've told them no before. Tonight, we're asking you to say it again louder. Appreciate your time and your service, and thank you for protecting the future of New Hanover County.
Thank you. Barry Goldberg.
And Mr. Chair, I just passed up those documents he referenced.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Barry Goldberg, sixty-one twenty-five Sweetgum Drive in Tarran Two. And my comment is the addition of Tarran Three with over a thousand people on forty-four acres and four hundred and forty units will have an adverse effect on our existing community and area. This large population will cause traffic problems, overcrowd our schools and roads. One problem will be flooding, with the adjacent land having a blacktop and water runoff, because this was the, when the cyclone hit, this was how, on Sandridge, how far up the water was coming with, with that property being empty. And for Tropical Cyclone Eight, we had water everywhere. The developer is also supposed to take care of our drainage ditches, which he has not done, and how will we ever get, you know, water to runoff in a hurricane if he's spending all his time worrying about this new project while neglecting us in Tarran Two? So my motion, or what I would like to say is that I think this project should be denied or at least have a continuance. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle O'Brien.
Good evening, Board members. I will keep this brief. I know there's quite a few people talking. I would like to briefly touch on the TIA that his representative was referencing. Again, as before, we are speaking of a TIA that was done in two thousand and twenty-one. It is outdated. At that time, that was at the height of COVID, and it was only taken during the winter months. I believe it was December, if I'm not mistaken, which is one of the slowest traffic counts of the year. It is not taking into consideration the summer months, which is higher traffic counts. And I would just like to reiterate again back to you some data from your own TIA, even with the antiquated data not including hundreds of new residents in the neighborhood and adjoining neighborhoods to including the Target that she was referencing before. And not considering tourist season, many of the LOS numbers are mediocre to poor. In two thousand and seventeen, Carolina Beach Road was already over capacity, and that is according to your information. The MGSR stated that Carolina Beach Road and South College Road intersection is as busy, is as busy as parts of Market Street and South College Road near UNCW. With annual average daily traffic between thirty thousand and forty thousand trips, for instance, the two thousand and fifteen annual average daily trips AADT were counted at thirty-one thousand on South College Road north of the intersection. South of the intersection, the AADT count was forty-one thousand. It's significant that such high AADTs are seen outside of the Wilmington city limits. Traffic volumes on these roads originally built to serve rural and intermediate tourist traffic are comparable to a city of over a hundred thousand. Simply adding traffic to Carolina Beach Road without creating alternative or additional routes for vehicular traffic or safe routes for pedestrians and bicyclists compounds the problem. That in itself does not meet the standards of what the Monkey Junction plan is. I will leave it at that, as I know we have several people talking. I oppose this and the very least take into consideration have an updated TIA done before coming and proposing this plan and maybe some roads for the safety of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Berkmeier.
Good evening, Chris Berkmeier, six-one-two-four Ambleside Drive. I'm actually in Century Oaks, but own property also at six-one-four-nine Sweetgum Drive in Tarran Woods. I just want to make sure that the developer knows that when he comes to the quasi-municipal hearing, that he has signed a statement that says that he knows, that he understands that he has the burden of providing that the proposal meets the four required conclusions. That includes that there's been no damage, there will be no damage to the value or damage to people who live in Tarran Woods. So, but the fact that he has not done a TIA when he knows that this was going to be something that was going to be highly contested as part of this, and not having addressed the road conditions that he has left our subdivision with, I have trouble understanding how we can move forward without having that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Brendan McCombi.
So I'm Brendan McCombi, head of school, Coastal Christian High School, founder of the school, and also I work on special projects for Coastal Christian High School. First of all, I got to say I'm pretty taken aback all of a sudden with this road coming in the back of the school. I did call the engineering company to ask why there was a road stubbed up to the back of our fence, and they said they won't answer any questions. I had to come tonight and ask my questions. So not only do I not know, but in no way would the school want a passageway coming into the back of our school facility. We're fenced off there. We actually have a chapel right where that road is showing that was built by an Eagle Scout in memory of his father who passed away ten years ago. So I can't imagine that we would take down that chapel for a road to come through the school. I must say that the thing I worry about or I think about, or my biggest concern for our students, is their relationship with Jesus Christ. The second thing I worry about most is their safety. In our country, we have school shootings week after week after week in this country. So we fenced our perimeter, and with this kind of development, now we'll need to do more fencing to keep our campus safe. As Tarran Woods has developed, we see foot traffic and bicycle traffic coming through our property now to try to get, I guess they're getting coffee at Starbucks or Port City Java or Dunkin' Donuts or something over there, but every time we see somebody come through that we don't know, we're calling the sheriff's department and we're going on a lockdown because we can only have people on our campus that we know who they are. And so it has put a burden, I think, on the sheriff's department just to handle situations like that. So I've already been thinking in the future, even with single-family homes, what are we going to do to still secure the back part of our property when Target is built? From the corner, this northwest corner, you're going to be able to see the lights of Target right there, and if you're fourteen, you don't have a driver's license and you want to get over there, you're going to be trying to cut through our property for the school. So we definitely would not want to be attached here as an egress point. We would probably be doing everything we could to prevent that for the school. So now that I've kind of gotten over the shock of that when I saw that arrow on her diagram, I'll just kind of leave it at that. I do want to say also, I'm noticing between the back of these quadruplexes to our fences, about fifty feet. When we built our school, there was nobody around us. Kaylee's Cove went in on the east side of Coastal Christian High School. Every time we have a soccer game, a baseball game, an outdoor worship event, the people from Kaylee's Cove are calling the sheriff's department and complaining about noise. Now, this is regular school noise. We do cheer loudly on our soccer field, but I have that same concern for development that close to the back of us. So it's not that I think we can say it can't happen, but I do hate that the sheriff's department's always coming over and asking us if we could get our fans to cheer a little quieter, and we can't do that. So, and you know, the sheriff, they'll say, weren't you here first? And we'll say, yeah, we were here first, and I guess the realtors just didn't tell the people when they were buying houses in Kaylee's Cove that we were right there. We're noisy, but now they complain. So that road stub, not only would that be a problem, but I would ask that there be a better buffer plan between us and them for noise. Again, I'm not opposed to development either in this area, but it does need to be done in a smart way. Let's see if I have anything else on my list here. I do have a lot of concern just for the study of traffic in this area. We have three hundred students. Myrtle Grove Christian has four hundred students. Target's going in. Chipotle's going in. Other businesses are going to go in right there. And I know tonight, coming here, I live down at that end of the county, I came up Golden Road, go north, get to Monkey Junction. I couldn't even get into the left-turning lane to come down here on Carolina Beach Road. I had to wait three lights to make that left-hand turn, and I know it was between, it was about five fifteen, this would be a high-traffic time, but I don't know how much study has been done about the traffic in that area, but Monkey Junction definitely needs some study in that before that's done. I would say, I'm not sure why anyone would consider higher density until that road is approved to go to Carolina Beach Road. It's stubbed up. I'm not sure why it didn't go all the way out, but I said that last time I was here, until there are good egress points, I certainly wouldn't consider higher density back in that The last thing I'll say is, you know, Coastal Christian has capped our enrollment at three hundred students. We did that four years ago because we don't think bigger is better. We want to know our students by name. We know our facility size. We know this area, and so for this community, bigger is not always better, and I think that decision might be pertinent to this as well. Do you all have any questions for me about any of my concerns for Coastal? I think we've been a big asset to the community, and we try to do our best back here. We love what we do, and we love the ministry that we have, and we just want to keep it safe and protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments, and, excuse me, thank you for the, everyone who spoke tonight. We appreciate your comments as well. At this time, there is a five-minute period for the applicant to address some of the questions and comments that have been raised during the public question and comment period.
Okay. I wasn't sure if your attorney is trying to get your attention. Again, thank you all. As I mentioned earlier, these are the concerns that we've heard. As was alluded to, the proposal has taken a variety of forms over a number of different years, but we feel good about the proposal that we have in front of you. There was some commentary about this being all multifamily, and I do want to point out for all of you, for what it's worth, that much of this development, not the entirety, but if you look along the external portions of this development, it's attached, single-family dwellings, it's townhomes, and there are eight single-family detached lots set aside in the southwestern corner at the tail, I guess, down at the bottom, for lack of a better... better term. And in terms of traffic, as I said, we will address that certainly with our engineer. One particular note I do want to make for this board, I think it's important, we were cognizant when we designed this site about the school's concerns actually, when it came to ensuring that the residential development that was adjacent was responsible and made the most sense. We heard concerns in past applications or past iterations of this plan that having high-rise isn't really the term, but multi-story development that's multifamily with balconies would raise concerns about the exact thing that the head of the school brought up this evening, which was school shooting potential. There was a reference to that, and so we intentionally modified to make those townhomes to accommodate that concern. So, the course of iterations of this project and how it's taken form has been conscientious. We've heard the concerns about stormwater and traffic, and again, we're working with them and are prepared to address those concerns before the Board of Commissioners. And if you have any questions for me, I'm glad to answer them, and my client is as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, it will turn over to the board. It's the board's opportunity to provide our comments and ask any questions that we might have as to the applicant, or any advice that we would pass on to either the applicant or the opposition as well. Ms. Ronhouse.
I have a question. So this one, was this, were you guys with the previous applicant in 2023, or was it a different developer or owner?
I believe it's the same owner. I can't speak to it by law firm.
Kaylin is the same.
It was, thank you.
I've been here.
Okay, thank you. So, that was denied by the Commissioners based on a few things, it sounded like incompatible use in traffic. Can you tell me what's changed since then?
I think the biggest thing that's changed is really what the application comes down to, which is it's a special use permit for an additional density versus a conditional rezoning. I know the configuration has changed as well in terms of where the buildings are, in terms of, as I mentioned, the townhomes being structured along the boundary closest to Coastal Christian High School, and I don't believe that the density has changed, or if it has, it's a minor change in the density. But I think really the dispositive factor in terms of what we have in this application versus 2023 is a special use permit for an additional dwelling allowance versus a conditional rezoning.
Mr. Chair.
So, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The special use process requires that the applicant demonstrate or answers four questions, and I was looking, I was going to quote them, but I can't find it, but one of them is that the application meets the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
What I've heard about several questions regarding engineering was that that'll be worked out. Shouldn't your application include the resolution, an actual design that the Board of Commissioners can understand and see that those issues have been properly addressed?
That's an excellent question. The considerations in terms of discrepancies between the UDO's terms and our site plan, I believe are strictly relating to the height, which does not affect our density request. The site plan that you see will not be changed. The heights, I don't believe are specifically listed on here, but we're glad to submit a sub.
I'm referring specifically to the TIA. The TIA, from what I heard, was that that's still being reviewed by your engineers. Shouldn't that be a part of an application to demonstrate that you're meeting the proper ordinance?
I understand your question, or let me see if I understand your question. Your concern is if we are to update our TIA based on what it is today versus in the future, that those are essentially not the same application. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. To essentially clarify the point that I made earlier, our engineer is reviewing to determine if we do have modifications necessary to our TIA. I don't, I think our position at this point would be that we don't, that our TIA is valid, that we do not generate a sufficient number of additional trips per day to warrant changes to that TIA, but that is something that we have to discuss with WMPO and NC DOT. Again, we submitted a TIA that we believe and feel good about as a part of this development, and if WMPO and NC DOT come back and say that's not the case, we would have to address it at that point, but our discussions with our traffic engineer indicate that our TIA is appropriate given this development site plan.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, a couple things. I'm going to address the applicant first, and what I will say is that when you get to the Commissioners, you're going to have to convince them that the reason that what you're proposing to them now addresses the concerns that they had previously during the time they considered the conditional rezoning. And if you go up there with the same application and you make the same arguments, I wouldn't expect a different result. And I can't say that what we're hearing tonight is a lot different from what I've heard in different times that I've heard this same type of application. Now, I'm saying that because we're here to offer feedback to you, and we're not making a decision tonight. We're basically trying to give you a trial run, right? And there's a different standard from a legal standpoint as to what the Board of Commissioners is going to be required to weigh as far as evidence goes, but you're going to make it really difficult on yourselves unless you can come up with some very compelling reasons as to why this is back before the board, regardless of whether it's in a special use permit format or it's in a rezoning format. And so I would just make sure that when you go through the four findings, that you're very deliberate and specific as to how you meet all of that criteria. To the opposition, folks, this is a different, this is different than before, and you've alluded to the fact that you've reached out to get some expertise, and obviously that is not inexpensive, and we understand and can appreciate the demands that that will put on you. But when the special use permit is heard by the Commissioners, in order for your opinions, feelings, and arguments to be considered, you are going to have to meet a certain legal standard, that that Board of Commissioners will only be able to consider evidence you put before them that meets that legal standard. So, please, take heed as to what we're saying when we strongly recommend that if possible, you do communicate and retain legal counsel to advise you, as well as other experts, so to make sure that your arguments and your positions can be validly considered, and so that the Board of Commissioners can determine what they believe is in the best interest of the community as far as this application goes. That's all I've got.
Mr. Moore.
So a couple of questions dealing with the road connections. On the school site itself showing the road connection, is that a staff-driven requirement with the connection?
Not necessarily. The ordinance does have some requirements to stub, to adjoining parcels, especially if there are opportunities to link to other existing stubs.
Right.
But this is what was provided in the application.
Okay, all right. That was, so for the applicant, that would be something I would definitely think, based on what you've heard tonight, probably not the best route to have a stub connection, considering that you've already got a use, and it's a school site, so it's kind of the same thing we just looked at on the last rezoning here, and we're just going to have a stub road sitting there, it's not going to go anywhere. So, I just wanted to see if that was a staff requirement or what was happening there. And then from the applicant's side, not getting too much in the weeds of the TIA, explain to me, so if this was built today, the current only access without improving Rosa Parks Lane and, I'm not sure, the other road name right south of that, but essentially would be through Tarrant Woods? Help me understand kind of access.
Yes, sir. It's that southern connection point. Our TIA is phased and does require additional improvements along that kind of northwestern corner, once we hit a certain number of COs that have been issued for this particular parcel.
Okay, all right. And so Rosa Parks Lane would come in at what phasing?
Rosa Parks Lane is not going to be an access point at this juncture.
Not going to be an access point.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. What is then the northmost section access? It says on this plan, look at that.
Oh, yes, sir. That goes straight through to Carolina Beach Road. That is the property. It's not included as a part of this SUP because it's, that property might be developed in a different way in the future, but my client does own that property and would have to make the connection to Carolina Beach Road to this SUP site at such time as the TIA is triggered, that next phase of the TIA improvements are triggered.
All right, so just make sure I understand this. So if this was built today, fully phased, everything was done, everything was COed, what I see in the outline of black would essentially be the connection points until future development would come in.
So if this were fully built out, the 444 units would not be built out until this connection point was made.
Okay, so there is that requirement in the TIA.
Yes, sir, and that would be triggered prior to full buildout of this particular section of the site.
That goes to my next question. When I would present to the Commissioners, I would make sure that you, whatever's going on with the TIA, I would definitely make sure that you show how the phasing plan comes into play, so the Commissioners understand, and also so the general public understands when connections are going to be made.
Yes, sir.
In other words, is it building this, is it building this, or is it building this? Like how that kind of comes into play? Sorry, now we can't say anything.
I understand what you're saying. I appreciate that.
But I think that's going to be very important because obviously from a connection point, it's going to be critical for the subdivision if it moves forward to have multiple access points. My personal opinion on it is I'm not sure that access point to the school makes a whole lot of sense, so they may be looking at some redesign there.
And if I may clarify, I spoke with my client, that is just common practices to stub in the event of future development, not necessarily an intended access point across the school's property, but just in case of future development.
I understand. That was all the comments there.
Ms. Ronhouse.
Thanks. I want to kind of continue the conversation that our chair brought up, and I think this is a comment to both sides. I didn't really see how your presentation addressed all four of the conclusions and kind of defended that, you know, you're not going to materially endanger the public, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, my recommendation to you guys is to kind of go through those step by step and explain that so that the Commissioners can understand. But what our chair was saying for the opposition is, it is expensive to obtain parties with standing, that's the definition, it's engineers that have professional engineering licenses, it's, you know, experts, it's appraisers, whatever have you. I did hear some things in here of potential folks you may want to reach out to and consider if they would meet that definition. You know, we talked about school safety, if that is a legitimate thing that you want to, you know, as an opposition, fall on, you could, I don't know if someone from the school could qualify for that as an expert, or law enforcement. Talked about, you know, emergency evacuation, are there folks that, you know, in that arena who could be considered experts? I do think, I mean, I think having an updated TIA is important. I don't know if you could have someone from the WMPO say that, you know, in writing that the TIA is okay, but I think that would go a long way. I mean, that's about 3,000 trips added, that's a lot of trips. So, you know, having someone in the opposition speak to the traffic as well. So, just trying to throw options of, just make it really clear that, you know, the neighbor can't go up there and speak, and that's going to be thrown out, that's not going to be a thing that is able, the Commissioners aren't going to listen to. So, and I asked for a continuance, I don't know that that's something that we would consider doing. When is the Commissioners meeting for this?
Yeah, so I was going to address that. I mean, and I'm glad you brought it up. So, we did have a request for a continuance multiple times. We're just a preliminary forum. I mean, at this stage, you know, we don't even, we're not even making a decision, we're just giving you feedback on it. I would say that if you would like to request a continuance, it's something that you should address with staff to see if it's something that could be potentially worked out ahead of the Commissioners meeting. You could ask and request the applicant to work with you to see if they will continue it. I mean, there's options for you, but ultimately, you know, as far as moving forward with the preliminary forum, I mean, unless, you know, members of the board are inclined to consider the continuance, it doesn't really change where we are as far as board tonight.
Yeah, we're just advising both parties of, you know, what, you know, how to go about going in front of the board of Commissioners, and I don't know when that, that's got to be another month away, right? So there, you have that time.
Correct, and that would be June 5th.
June 5th, thanks.
Yes, you do have approximately 30 days, and we do understand that that, you know, the time constraint on that, it is, it is a tight turnaround.
I'm done, thanks.
Does anybody else on the board have any additional feedback for the applicant and/or the opposition? All right, hearing none? Ms. Rock, you have something? Okay, all right. Ms. Farrell, I guess we hear from you now as to advise us as to where we go from here.
Yes, sir. So following this meeting, the application will go to the Board of Commissioners meeting for a quasi judicial hearing, as I was just corrected to Monday, June 2nd. June 5th is our next planning board meeting. Each side will have 15 minutes total with an additional five minutes each for rebuttal. Reminder, because this is a quasi judicial hearing, any evidence related to this case must be presented in person at the hearing and must be based on factual evidence and not opinion. Planning staff will post the staff report materials that will be sent to the Board of Commissioners on the county's development activity page at the close of business on this coming Monday for public review.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will close the public forum. Thank you to everyone who has stayed with us tonight. It's been a long meeting. We appreciate everyone being here for the public forum regarding the special use permit and for offering up their application and their comments. There are no other items on our agenda. Ms. Rock, do we have any announcements from staff?
No, just thank you again for your time today and what you've suggested and said.
Well, we appreciate you and staff for all you do as well, and at this time.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made.
Second.
All those in favor.
All in favor, stand up.
All right. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.